He was, he asked me what happened.
Good evening, everybody. Like to welcome you to the Town Council, Barnstable Town Council Meeting for March 16th, 2023. I got 7:05 on the clock. And again, just like to welcome you. Thanks for being with us. And at this point in time, can we do the roll call, please? Assistant Town Clerk Janet Murphy.
Councillors, Actless.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Cullum. Cusack.
Present.
Rap Grecetti.
Present.
Levek.
Here.
Ludkey.
Here.
Mendez.
Here.
Neary. Schnep.
Here.
Shaughnessy.
Here.
Starr.
Here.
Stein Hilber.
Here.
You have 11.
Thank you. If we could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and please remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just want to continue to remember the war in the Ukraine and the people there and that that conflict would be, find a resolution quickly. Thank you. It is now time for public comment. And has been the routine, anybody in the audience here in the hearing room, like to speak during public comment, I'd ask you to limit it to three minutes. And if you could, please sign in, state your name. And again, you'd have three minutes. So you can come right up to the podium. Just want to recognize that we have Councilor Paul Neary has joined us on the dais. Welcome, Mr. Julius.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And thank you, Council, for your time and your dedication to this town. We really do, as residents here, we really do appreciate it. Sometimes things can get a little heated. I'm not here for that tonight.
If you just state your name, that would be great.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
John Julius from Hyannis.
Thank you.
So the reason I decided that I might pop in here tonight and say a couple of words, as I'm sure everybody here knows, there's a lot of things happening right now in our town. One, we have the big CLF potential lawsuit coming straight at us. I know I've spoken in the past on that. Two, we have something that you all probably saw earlier this week when the planning board turned down the dockside proposal. Thirdly, we have the 312 units over at 35 Scudder, Twinbrooks, that I call pure lunacy. And I do realize now, there's been a lawsuit filed there, so that probably will be on hold for a while. But I'm really here tonight because those three things that I just mentioned all tie into something. And so here I go. Remember back in 1998? Probably, Matthew, you were a hell of a lot younger and who knows, I don't know how old.
Much better looking.
You were probably a teenager. But nonetheless, legislation back then in 1998 formed the Cape Cod Land Bank. That legislation was supposed to, was designed to do the following, to protect drinking water supplies, acquire open space and conservation land, provide bicycling and walking trails, and enhance opportunities for recreation. Today, we have community preservation money that we all pay in our taxes. Sometimes I wonder where that money goes. Back in the mid 80s, I worked for a very large building company and we had a contract to buy some land over off Old Jail Lane. This is in the mid 80s now. And lo and behold, we were going to build about 100 homes over there. And it really, at the time, wasn't overbuilding. They were one acre lots. It wouldn't have destroyed the town. But something miraculous happened. First huge pushback over there. In fact, they lit one of the pieces of equipment of the excavator on fire, and they damaged some other pieces of equipment. That's, that was the push, part of the pushback. But then, the Town Council then, in the mid 80s, did something incredible. They created a special appropriation and they bought that land, which today still sits as open space. Folks, you're the governing body here in town. And we're, we're all hoping that all of you can help us as we go into the future to help preserve and protect. And I can tell you, when and if that lunacy comes up down there at Scudder, I might have to have about 10 other people donate their three minutes to me. Because I could tell you, I could, I could stand here for the next 45 minutes and tell you everything that's wrong with that. And I used to be a builder, so I, I am pretty good on this. And I can tell you that I've racked my brain and cannot find one thing, not one. I sort of feel bad having to even waste time to comment on it now that it's gone into litigation. But nonetheless, you'll see me again in the future on that topic. And once again, thank you truly for your time and thank you for the opportunity to speak. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Julius. And thanks for staying around the three minutes.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
We can.
Cool. Let me just cough and get that out. Hello, my name is Luke Andre Sater. Some of you know, I was here last week with the Barnstable Youth Commission to present on what we've been doing in the community. And it's good to be back to see all of your faces. So thank you again. And on behalf of the Youth Commission, the Silent Spring Institute, the BHS Green Clubs, and the Sturgis Environmental Clubs, we have been busy working on our event called the PFAS in Community Event. That's aimed at bringing valuable education as to the chemical PFAS and its effects that it can have. Most importantly, I just wanted to say thank you to everyone who works in keeping our water quality safe. And we really recognize that this is an important job that is very underappreciated in all aspects of life. Without safe water quality, we would not have a healthy lifestyle. And this event is really just aimed at highlighting the hard work that everybody has been doing in this community to keep PFAS out of our water and to see from the experts and people like you guys who are actively working to keep this chemical out of our water supply, and also teach people about what they can be doing to minimize their own exposure to this chemical. So I don't know if there's like a camera or anything, but like this is the flyer that we made. So I'm just gonna like, hold that up there for like probably five seconds. So, and I'll also show it to you guys too. And I have some extra ones if you guys want, pass them out. Sorry, I'm supposed to be speaking into here. So the event is at the 529 Building on Main Street. It's on March 25th, and it's from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. and it's a Saturday. So just wanted to describe a little bit about what the event will be talking about. So we're going to be having a lot of panelists there who are going to be talking a little bit about some short films that we're going to be showing and some legislation that's in the community and also some studies that are going on in the community about PFAS. So the panelists are going to be Julian Seer, Mark Els, Keith Lewison, Betty Ludkey, who's right here. Hello, it's good to see you. Dan Santos, Dr. Laurel Shader, and Betsy Young. We're going to be going over some short films about education and PFAS, and then we're going to be hearing for some panelists and student leaders, as well as town government leaders and public works leaders who are, know a lot about PFAS. So just thank you, everyone, for this opportunity to speak, and I appreciate it.
Thanks, Luke. Anybody else in the audience? Do we have anybody that'd like to participate remotely, Director Polian?
There is no one on Zoom for a public comment.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. And looking to my left, do we have any response to public comment? Council Clerk, please.
Thank you very much, President Levek. And I thank both, both Mr. Julius and Luke for speaking today about water quality. I know that we're investing a lot of time, money, and energy, and expertise on our comprehensive wastewater plan for the town, for our wastewater. But I think that the other prong of interest for us is protecting our water quality. So not only for PFAS, but for future drinking water supplies. So I thank Mr. Julius for bringing up that the land bank was, one of the premier justifications for the land bank was to protect drinking water supplies. And thank you again, Luke, for your comments. And I hope to attend that 26th presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Clerk. Council Shaughnessy, please.
Thank you, President Levek. I appreciate everyone for their comments. I want to say to Mr. Julius, although I'm incredibly conscious of the different things you bring up, you know, the one striking difference between 1996 and now, you know, in 1996, I was working at Sweetwater's and got a house with a few other waitresses from Sweetwater's. And I remember calling a real estate agent, and there were 12 different single-family homes for the three little waitresses to look at, all well within our budget. We wound up in Roy Chase's former house down on Greenwood Ave. We had a sauna in the basement. We had a pool in the backyard, and we paid $750 a month. That is not the case now. So it's hard to know what to do when our scarcity of housing is so great and our lack of inventory and the demand for housing is so high. So somehow, we've got to come to a compromise on that. Luke Andre, always a pleasure to see you. As always, I can't wait to see you here in the future. I think it's so great you guys are doing an event on the PFAS. I participated in the study along with Councilor Ludkey. I think it's a great opportunity to learn more about it. And lastly, I want to know, maybe you could answer this question, George. Are those sweatshirts available for purchase? Because I would very much like to have a Barnstable Youth Commission sweatshirt. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Shaughnessy. I think it's a members-only thing. Anybody to my left and want to comment, public comment? Okay. Looking to my right, anybody wants to, Council Starr, please.
Thank you, thank you, President Levek. I'd like to thank both speakers. And Luke, you and Izzy did a wonderful job at the job fair the other day. It was packed with people. It was great. Thank you.
I was at the job fair, too. It was great. I was, I don't know if it's anywhere in our agenda, but it's, I think it's duly noted that there were 39 companies and organizations were there. And I did get to walk around, obviously. And then over 300 students went through the job fair. Pretty, pretty incredible. So, and I'm sure those 39 companies were very thankful that the Barnstable Youth Commission took the lead and made that happen. So a special thanks to Amy Harwood for all the work that she did to put that through, and Mr. Noonan, who's with us here in the hearing room. Thank you. Going back to Council Ludkey, please.
Yeah, I'd like to add my appreciation for that job fair. Beautifully run, beautifully organized. You wouldn't know so many people went through it because you had it laid out so nicely. Everything flowed. It was just absolutely a top-notch event. So thank you for that. Both speakers, thank you for your comments tonight. One thing I appreciate about John Julius is that he comes here to speak and he engages in the process, but he's also very involved in social media. And he inspires a lot of others to think about things. He provides very thoughtful, detailed comments. And I like that. I like people who do both. I think it's important to comment in the system, so to speak. If you're on wheel and social media, a lot of times there's grenades thrown and things like that. So John Julius is a really important voice in our community, and he does have a great background in development. And I think his key was preserve and protect what we can, given exactly what you said, today's circumstances. So thank you so much, John, for your comments. And Luke, he and I got to spend some quality time at the mall this weekend, right, Luke? We were out there recruiting folks to participate in the PFAS study. And I think we both were surprised at how few people from Hyannis go to the mall, right? Because that had to be our first question, do you live in Hyannis, right? And not very many did. But I think we ended up getting, what, 17 folks and perhaps friends and family of those. And I know calls have already gone out based on what we did. So thank you. Like, it was, it was an absolute honor and pleasure to stand there with you and learn more about you and, and talk to the folks. It was fun, right? It really, we made it fun. It was interesting. Yeah. So thank you so much. And thank you for your comments tonight. And I'm honored to be with Mark Els and Dan Santos, representing the town at your event. So thank you.
Thank you, Council Ludkey. Council Cusack, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Luke, I just also want to encourage you to keep coming back. You're clearly a leader in this community. And we don't hear enough from your age cohort. And you're an eloquent presenter. So thank you. And you're always welcome here.
Thank you, Council Cusack. Council Rap Grecetti, please.
Thank you, too, to the two that came out, Luke and John Julius. With regards to PFAS, and I, I don't think the, I don't know if the town manager is going to address this, with regards to the recent proposed regulation by EPA on drinking water and PFAS, I don't know if that's going to be discussed at the PFAS in your community. Here's a, here's a plug for your event, Luke. But I'd be interested to learn more in how that might affect the town going forward in, with regards to PFAS. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Rap Grecetti. Anybody else? Comment to my right? Okay. Again, thank you for a comment. And, and Luke, wherever you go to school, make sure you come back to Barnstable and work here in Cape Cod, okay? We don't want your talents going to South Beach or anything like that, okay? Appreciate you being here. Thanks so much. And thank you, John, for your comments. Okay. Moving on to Town Manager Communications. So the Town Manager's Report has been pre-recorded and is available to Town Council and the public. The report will be prepared in written form and posted on the Town Manager's website as the, as in the past. The Town Manager and staff will be available to answer any questions regarding the report as presented. The Town Manager Communications for the period of March 3rd to March 16th, 2023, included an update on, one, the fall election announcement from Town Clerk Anquirk, two, Youth Commission Job Fair results, which I discussed earlier, the three, the Budget Action Calendar, four, the recent town bond issue, five, continued town discussion with Mass DEP regarding proposed changes to Title V, six, draft manager town, draft Town Manager grant of location regulations for small wireless facilities, seven, reminded to purchase beach stickers, eight, disposition of three municipal parcels, nine, Barnstable Public School Superintendent continues FY 2024 fiscal year, for those who don't know what that means, 2024 operating budget discussions with School Committee, and 10, Director of Public Works Communications Coordinator Kelly Colopy provided an update on Water Resource Management. So with that, I would probably invite Town Manager Mark Els to come to the podium. And because I'm going to assume that there might be a, a question or two possibly from the council. So give you a head start, maybe? Any, any comment, question? Wow. Okay, good. Thank you for making me look good. Council Starr.
Thank you. My, actually, my, one of my first comments to Janet Murphy, that the assistant. Bring it in. Okay.
Speaking to the mic, sir.
Okay, thank you. I'll get it yet.
Question for Janet Murphy?
There was, there was, in, in the report, there was comment about taking out nomination papers on the, starting March 17th. And it also listed the, the, who, the, the, what's open, you know, all of, all of us are going to be running. So when, when did, when did the signatures have to be back? That was just.
Good question.
It said, it said, call, call Mrs. Quirk. And I didn't want everybody to call, in the world, to call Mrs. Quirk.
They are available March 17th tomorrow in the office, yes. I, I think they're going to be due back in August, I think it is. I'm not sure the date, but I'll have to get back to you on that one. And you're correct, there are three positions for the School Committee, two, one for the housing, and for the councils, all 13 precincts are up for reelection.
Okay. And if anybody's listening, just make sure that when people sign your nomination papers, that the clerk can read them. And printing is a signature, is that right, correct? Or I, I advise people to write.
It's a sig.
Excuse me, go ahead.
It's a signature, but they can write it clearly so that, what we ask is if they have like a middle name, make sure that we can make out a couple of the letters. So if there's three people living in a family, we know who actually voted.
Okay.
Thank you.
Follow up, sir? I have one question for the, for the Town Manager. The $14 million bond, was that for money that we've already appropriated for the CWMP?
I don't believe it was for, it was for capital projects. Director Millen's here. Mark, why don't you come up? I don't know if you can add any detail to that. But it's, it's a typical bond issue that we would do. Certainly, I think what the, you know, what the bond rating agency cited relevant to the town of Barnstable was a significant part, besides the fact that we, again, maintained our AAA bond rating.
Good evening, Councillors. Mark Millen, Director of Finance. So the bonds covered several school projects, some municipal facilities, a couple of water projects, and a couple of sewer projects. But there were no CWMP projects included in that bond issue. Right now, we plan on financing most of those projects through the state revolving loan fund. So we're not borrowing from the municipal bond market to date, but we will eventually.
Okay. Thank you.
A follow-up on that, just since you said.
Sure. Director Millen, if you could just state the point.
Mark, could you give us the rate of the last bond offering?
Last year's?
Just the most recent bond offering?
Oh, it was 3.25%, which was 100 basis points more than last year's bond issue, which reflects the market.
Did I hear that right? What was the, so this was 3.25?
Yes.
And last year's was?
2.25.
2.0. That's what I wanted to hear. So that's like a 50% increase in cost, right? Interest, I mean, it.
In interest rate, yes. Yes. And that's reflecting, I mean, that's what's happening. And the, the positive news is that we're earning a lot more in our investments.
Well, that's good.
So our cash deposits are bringing in more money.
Okay. Well, we might as well ask, where do we keep our money? I'm hoping not SVB.
We do not have any money invested in Silicon Valley Bank, or SVB, or Signature Bank on New York City. We have no cash deposits in those banks, and we have no investments in either one of those corporations' stocks. We have a, we diversify our asset portfolio. We're in, we have about 35 different banks that we do do business with. Most of our money overnight is in Cape Cod Five, but we sweep it out, $250,000 increments to multiple banks on a nightly basis, and then it's swept back in so we can maximize our FDIC insurance coverage. So it's very well diversified, but no risky investments. That's, security is our number one priority. Liquidity is number two, and yield is number three.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That was like a commercial for the town of Barnstable.
Top Janet Yellen, I'll tell you.
Thank you, Council Schnep. Council Neary, do you have any comment? Okay. Oh, back to Council Schnep. I'm sorry about that.
I was just jumping on the interest rate.
Oh, problem.
In fact, fellow councillors have any questions for, no? All right. I, thank you, Mark. Thank you, Mr. President. My first question was on item number three, which is primarily the Budget Action Calendar. And it also refers to a memo that we received this week from Mark Mill regarding what I believe is the cherry sheet and the Chapter 70. Mark Millen regarding what I believe is the cherry sheet and the Chapter 70 projected aid that we have. Definitely, that was a great memo. There is a lot of information in that, and probably need to look at that a little bit more closely. But I'd like to, when we have our workshop in a week, or the next meeting, really have an understanding how that Chapter 70 funding can be spent. It's designated for schools, but it seems like we have the ability to use some of that increase for our general operating or capital. Is that a correct understanding?
It's subject to the 60-40 split, so 40% of that, correct. But Mark Millen will be folding that into either prior, for all of you, in discussions, or however you would like us to communicate, and then included when we do our presentation at your first meeting in April.
This might just be an education for myself and other councilors. Chapter 70 is for education, but if we have, if we move money around, we can use that increase in other ways.
Yeah, the way that we have our policy, it's, you know, these growth dollars, it's not a 60-40 split between, you know, the total budget. It is in growth dollars. So, that would be two and a half plus growth, plus other revenues that come in. Now, yes, it's based on, and I think the superintendent, if you had a chance to view her presentation last night, I know Lynn sent you all the link, so when you have time...
I know. It's just a timing.
Late, after the council meeting. She did a very nice job explaining it, and Director Millen can do certainly the same. But when you look at the overall school budget and the way that we put in place cost controls, the 60-40 is to make sure that we can plan for a set amount percentage-wise going into each fiscal year. And when you look at the total school budget, I think it's about a 70, or maybe 70% general fund, 30% other, rough numbers. But, so, certainly, our tax dollars are contributing significantly to our school department's overall budget, even though we will have revenue sources come in, like Chapter 70, that are a result of, you know, are a result of eligibility criteria that the state establishes, and that it'll be subject to 60-40.
And historically, the Cape towns have not been huge recipients of Chapter 70 money. So, this is with school reform...
Mark, why don't you come up? Because he can certainly share more accurate detail than I can, because I think what we've seen occur is significant, and it is unique for us, Town of Barnstable, in this particular case.
Yes. So, good news from the state. The Student Opportunity Act, which is, which was originally scheduled to be phased in over a seven-year period, got shrunk to a six-year period because of COVID. We're in the third year of the sixth year of implementing the Student Opportunity Act. And what that did is it recognized the increased cost of providing education in public school systems across the state. And so, they increased the inflationary factors for multiple categories of costs for basic education. And then, they recognized the additional cost that it takes to educate English learners and children from economically disadvantaged situations. And so, there's incremental spending on top of that, that we have to spend towards education. And as a result of, there's two major components that resulted in our aid increasing significantly. Number one is overall enrollment. Foundation enrollment went up 109 students from 23 to 24. That's factor number one. Factor number two is we had an increase in English-language learner enrollment and an increase in economically disadvantaged enrollment. So, that contributed significantly to the increased amount of money we're required to spend in education for Barnstable. To the point, it was $9 million more than what we spent last year. The state looks at what our local contribution effort should be. They calculate that based on income and wealth of the community. Historically, Cape communities have done very poorly in state aid because of our wealth factor down here, our property wealth factor, not our income wealth, but our property wealth. So, they look at our level of effort. They call that our level of effort. And our level of effort goes up by our municipal revenue growth factor every year, which is how much we can raise locally through property taxes and other receipts. And they calculated that our contribution towards that $9 million increase is $3 million. So, they fill the hole. They fill the gap, $6 million. And so, we got a nice bump, but it was really related to those key factors of enrollment increases overall, and increases specifically in those two categories, English learners and economically disadvantaged student population. We continue to see a rise in those two groups. So, and so, that's the result. And we expect we'll probably get some increases in future, mainly due to inflationary factors that are built into the Student Opportunity Act. Don't know where enrollment's going to go, particularly, you know, subcategories of enrollment. That's hard to project. You're welcome.
Thank you. I'm sorry, do you have more?
I have two, but I could defer to other councilors and come back.
I don't know if any other councilors have. Yeah, I would say keep going, councilors have. All good questions.
All right, Mark. We have a very well-explained effort on disposing of some of our assets. And I just had a quick question. The disposition of 259 Barnstable Road is going to be coming up next week, or the announcement, the notice of it. And it said that disposal will be without restrictions. I'm assuming that's sort of no restrictions on use, or, but are we planning to set minimum bids for the properties? Does that have anything to do with how we're going to be advertising this?
I'm not sure if Andy Clyburn can... Oh, David, you're here. Hello, David. Come up. Yeah, the restriction that we were referring to in the memo was the affordable housing use that the council designated for the...
For the other person, right?
Yeah. So, Dave.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, councilors. David Anthony, Director of Asset Management. Always an
interesting subject when you start to talk about minimums, because if you set the minimums too high, you restrict competition. But at the same time, unless there's a clear and valid reason, for example, some of the tax possession properties that were merely little slivers, we wanted to just make sure that we got them off the books. So, we set the minimum very low. This property is assessed at $165,000. It was market appraised at $100,000. So, we decided to set the entry level minimum bid at $20,000 to encourage competition. We have four direct abudders to this property, and we hope that those properties will certainly submit bids, knowing that competition can be there, and they can acquire this 0.13-acre parcel, likely not big enough to do anything with on its own. So, it would need to be combined with one of the abutting parcels in order to make it significant.
So, if we get one bid and it's at $20,000, can we, do we have a reason to reject it? Or do we have that ability in the way we're writing the RFP? Or will we have to accept whatever bid meets that minimum?
Actually, we always write into our property disposal bids that we can cancel the process at any point in time up until signing the purchase and sale. But just like in any transaction, if we get a legitimate bidder, and it's only one, and we get that minimum bid, we would have to question whether or not we're going to get increased competition the next time, and what is our standing in the business community. So, there's a little bit of that tug-of-war over a bird-in-the-hand kind of a discussion.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last question? This one's maybe for Mr. Santos. I didn't have a chance to view the presentation by Kelly on the Water Resource Management Planning, but I did have a question. I don't know if it was in the presentation regarding our freshwater, our fresh ponds. I'm aware that the CIP includes some opportunities to treat some of our lakes and ponds. But we have currently a long pond that is under a proposed management plan. And I didn't know if there was any progress on moving toward floating islands or some other management this summer.
I'm the facilitator of questions tonight. Dan Santos, please.
Dan Santos, Director of Public Works. So, relative to the freshwater ponds on Chubel's Pond, we're going to be doing alum treatment this spring. So, that's underway to get that done. And on Long Pond, where we've talked about doing some piloting of wetlands, floating wetlands, we're working on a schedule right now for procurement to hopefully get that in place sometime this year. But it really depends on procurement, how long that takes, and the permitting. But it's definitely something that my staff is working on to get put in place as soon as possible.
Okay. Will you need any supplemental funding for that project? Or is that already, is there already funding that's available for that?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure yet. I believe we are in good shape. But it depends on what, there's a real spread in the costs that we're getting, the cost estimates. So, we really need to nail that down with a good, solid scope of work, and then we can get the bids, and we'll know.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. President, I just wondered, is Kelly going to present to us tonight, or no?
That's in the recorded Town Manager...
Okay, in the recorded. Because I just want to mention that I did not come to Town Hall the other day, or a couple of days ago, when Griffin did a presentation for the Centerville residents regarding the CWMP. I thought it was excellent, absolutely excellent, from his slides to his articulation of the whole process. I think it was very helpful. And I encourage everybody to view it if you are in one of the first few phases of the CWMP and the impacts to the community. I thought it was excellent. And there's still time to add comments to the process. But very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Rapoletti. Just want to, any other questions regarding the Town Manager Report? Just, Councilor Attles, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Town Manager Els, would you like to inform folks when the public hearing is? Or would you like me to wait until my comments, updates?
Oh, the public hearing relevant to the, again, Mark Els, Town Manager. The Town Manager's Grant of Location Regulations, providing standards for placement of wireless communication facilities in the public right-of-way, is scheduled for March 23rd at 2:00 p.m. via Zoom. So, if you'd like to participate. Typically, the way we do Town Manager hearings is I introduce the subject, I have staff or staff support present, then we take public comment. Then, it's really not a back-and-forth at that point. But then I take, take the matter under advisement for 30 days typically. If it needs to be extended, it can be extended. I allow the public to continue to comment. So, hopefully, we've heard the comment at the meeting. We continue to gather any additional comment. And then, ultimately, I can adopt if there isn't any significant comment, or we can modify, and then we would go back through the process again. It's typically how we do that.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you for asking the question.
Thank you, Town Manager Els. And I just think it's worth repeating that if you haven't had a chance to watch the Town Manager's Report, presentation specifically in regards to Sarah Hearn, it also, there's going to be more follow-up in regards to that Chapter 70 funding and that increase in that, and how it relates not only to the school, but the town budget as a whole. And there'll be more follow-up discussion in regards to that at our next meeting, talking about the possibility of a debt exclusion override and that discussion, that workshop in regards to that. So, it would be really good to get strong in the knowledge of where the schools are at, where that funding's coming from. I believe their increase, as it was mentioned, is somewhere around 8%, which is significant, but covered by the Chapter 70A, as was discussed. But furthermore, and again, how that affects us moving forward. So, again, I think it's real important, not only for our public, but for our councilors to understand the importance of that, because it will dovetail. Information will, is forthcoming that will follow up on that and build on that. So, in regards to the budget that really the governor's putting together in this Chapter 78 that we're getting. And thank you again for the report. And I believe this, the recording process is helping us in regards to time and make sure that we're moving forward, you know, in our meetings. And I just want to say thank you to Town Manager Els for taking the extra step to do that, and Director Poynant and your staff for making that happen as well. So, and thank you. Just want to show a sign of support to, for the extra work that's going forth. Okay. With that, I just want to make sure that we don't have any other comment, question. Okay. And we're closing Town Manager Communications, part of our meeting. But going into and welcoming Cape Cod Commission Director Christie Senatori, and also want to recognize our Barnstable representative to the Cape Cod Commission, former Town Council President Fred Chiragodis, who's in the audience, and also Sarah Colvin, who's here as well. Thank you for being here. No stranger to these here parts. So, without further ado, thank you for being here, Director Senatori. And the microphone's yours.
Perfect. Thank you. Good evening. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here to present some updates on behalf of the Cape Cod Commission. I'm Christie Senatori, the Executive Director of the Cape Cod Commission. And as President Town Council Matt Levesque suggested, Matt, Sarah Colvin, our Communications Manager, is joining me here this evening, as well as Fred Chiragodis, who's the Cape Cod Commission Representative from the Town of Barnstable. And before I get into my remarks, I can't thank Fred enough for his commitment to the Cape Cod Commission, for his dedication, and really for his hard work. And I would like to allow Fred the opportunity to make some remarks at the end, if he'd like to. So, from time to time, I do visit the 14 select boards across the Cape, as well as the Barnstable Town Council, just to provide some updates. Really, it's an opportunity to open the lines of communication as well. So, I did share with you all tonight a copy of our 2022 year-end review. I want to emphasize, this isn't a comprehensive look at all the work that we did last year. But it does provide a high-level overview of the highlights of some of the work, as well as some of our priority projects. But tonight, I want to focus on just three critical issue areas for Cape Cod, and those are water quality, coastal resiliency and climate change, and of course, housing. So, in terms of water quality, certainly much of our efforts to date have been around coastal water quality. And we're seeing significant increases in terms of our communities making progress and accessing funding, taking advantage of available financing and funding across the region. And as you may know, the Cape Cod Commission provides administrative and technical support to the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund Management Board. I want to thank Town Manager Mark Els for participating on that board and serving in the capacity as Vice Chair. But just last year alone, the Water Protection Fund awarded nearly $28 million in subsidies to water quality projects across the Cape. Nearly $100 million have been awarded in grants to date. We're really pleased to see that Barnstable has been awarded nearly $15 million to date, and I believe there are four projects on this year's intended use plan. We were also pleased last year to commence work on our freshwater initiative. I know you've talked already tonight about freshwater lakes and ponds. We began that freshwater initiative effort with an update to our pond and lake atlas. So, we now have a really important set of baseline data and information for all of the ponds across the region. Of the 890 freshwater lakes and ponds that we have here on the Cape, only about 10% of those are monitored. So, certainly, the limited availability of data and information is making it challenging to gather a clear understanding of pond health. So, throughout the freshwater initiative that we'll be working on over the course of the next 12 months and beyond, we'll be working with local organizations, with regional organizations, pond groups, certainly working with the 15 municipalities across the Cape, and stakeholders, so that we can design a framework to really identify some of the strategies that are going to be most effective to addressing pond health in our region. As it relates to climate change, a lot of our work has really been focused around coastal resiliency and climate change. As you know, we have a climate action plan, for the first time was developed for the Cape last year, and we're continuing to implement that climate action plan currently, and develop tools and resources that can be utilized by the 15 Cape communities. As of this year, all 15 communities are now going to be represented within our Low-Lying Roads Project. And so, we're pleased that Barnstable has an upcoming hearing, a meeting on March 28th. That's a virtual meeting on, at 3:30. And so, designs for some of the prioritized road segments that are in that Low-Lying Roads inventory will be posted. And certainly, meeting details are available on our website. So, we'd certainly encourage participation in that important coastal resiliency infrastructure discussion. As it relates to climate change, we've also developed model bylaws, and these address coastal resiliency. They're addressing large-scale solar projects, electric vehicle charging infrastructure, as well as a comprehensive set of floodplain design guidelines. And so these are things that we have available to the towns now, and we'll continue work on our, to implement our climate action plan. And, and I wanted to also just identify that last year, we held the second round of our Climate Ambassadors Program, where we're reaching out to high school students across the Cape. They submit an application, they get accepted into the program, and they participate in eight sessions. We're holding the third, third round, the third session of our Climate Ambassadors Program right now. And we've had several students from the Town of Barnstable. And it's really exciting to see the, the students, the younger generation, really engaged in, in climate change and taking action. They're able to bring the information that they learned back to their peers, and it's been a really rewarding experience for both us, as well as the students. And then finally, just kind of wrapping up, as you all know, the Cape Cod Commission has begun work on a regional housing strategy. So this is going to address housing supply, affordability, and availability issues. And so the intent is to identify areas appropriate for housing development and to create policies and strategies that are appropriate for the Cape. The median sales price for a single-family home was around $690,000 at the end of last year, Cape-wide. And so the annual income, household income needed to affordably purchase that median sales-priced single-family home is about $210,000. That's significantly higher than the Cape's median income of $82,000. Certainly, the information that I shared with you tonight is also providing a baseline of data and information for your community. We have these housing profiles for all 15 towns now, as well as one for the entirety of Barnstable County. And that's really helping us to set the baseline so that we can develop strategies that work for our region. We know that this, this, this difference in the sales price versus what we have for median incomes here in the region, combined with the lack of available homes that we do have, the lack of diversity, we know 82% of our housing stock is single-family homes, and the fact that 30% of our housing stock Cape-wide is second, second-family homes, really does mean that affordable and attainable housing is only getting further out of reach. So we're also, as part of our housing, our, our housing strategy, developing a needs assessment. So we're working with a consultant, so that we have a better understanding of the housing supply and demand that we're experiencing. We'll have some projections going out to the year 250, I'm sorry, 2050, so that we can really identify and capture information around housing needs. And this is particularly as they relate to the region's workforce, year-round residents, and, and including the rental market as well. So again, like our freshwater initiative, this project is also going to incorporate significant and robust stakeholder engagement. Discussions with all 15 towns, our staff and town staff have already happened, really to get a better understanding of what some of the significant challenges are, and some of the strategies that have worked and where we can, where we can focus our efforts moving forward. So throughout the course of the spring, we'll be engaging with the public, municipal representatives, housing advocates, builders, developers, employers, and certainly, a lot of other interested citizens that can really help us to define some of those local and regional strategies that can be successful in addressing the housing crisis that we have. So I'll wrap up by just identifying that last year, we held our first in-person One Cape Summit. We hadn't done that in a couple of years due to the pandemic, and it was really great to be back in person. And if some of you were there, we appreciate your attendance. We are planning for this year's One Cape Summit. And certainly, we'll be releasing more information within the next month or two, at least around some dates and locations, as we set the agenda for that. So I'll pause for some questions, but I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity. That was obviously not a comprehensive look at all of our work, but just some highlights. And certainly happy to take questions now, or you're welcome to get in touch with me, or get in touch with Sarah after this meeting. And if Fred did have any comments, I'd love to be able to, to refer to him if he wants to provide any remarks. Otherwise, I'm happy to take questions.
No introduction needed.
Well, thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Actually, Christie told me if I didn't get up, I should never be able to sit down. So one, I'd like to thank all the counselors, because I have a fair understanding of how much work really goes into this job. You know, the issues facing the Town of Barnstable are the same issues that, that all of the, every town on the Cape is facing, and, and much of Massachusetts. You know, housing affordability, housing availability, maintaining a workforce, and then, and then the real issues of water, water quality, you know, wastewater. I mean, they're all, those things are all tied together. We're all trying hard to make it work. So we have the same goals. The question is, is do we have the same routes to get there? We're trying. I want to thank the Cape Cod Commission. It's amazing how the staff there, how much work they do and how much they put in. I think I'm, they work in collaboration with the Town of Barnstable and all the towns. It's, it's pretty amazing every day. We had, believe it or not, we had meetings this, this morning, this afternoon at 1:00, another meeting at 3:00, and here we are this evening. And I think this is Christie's third town that she's visited this week. So there's a ton of work that's going on, and hopefully, we continue to work together. Thank you all.
Thank you, Fred. Appreciate your service. Bringing back Director Sanatori. And is there any questions from the council? Counselors, your hand up? Okay. Okay. Counsel Lucky, please.
Thank you so much for your presentation. I've read so many of your documents. You hire the best contractors. You do beautiful work. So thank you for that. One thing I'm curious about, and I know a lot of my constituents have asked the same question, what are the external factors or actors that guide what you do? I, I don't have a clear understanding of, of what, what, what external pieces guide what you do. If you're saying, like, you, you pick things to do. How do you, can you explain that process? And again, what outside agencies influence? Do you go by what, what the federal, what the state government is doing? Just if you could explain a little bit about that process, how you guide your priorities to do what you're doing?
Sure. So that's a, probably a lengthy answer, but I will try to be brief in my response, and I appreciate your question. So certainly, through the President. A lot of our work is guided, obviously, by the Cape Cod Commission Act. That's an act of the legislature that we were established and certainly guides a lot of the work that we do. The regional policy plan that we have, and we update from time to time, typically every five years, really does guide a lot of our planning work, our regulatory work. And then a lot of our other plans certainly stem from our regional policy plan. So many of the recommendations within our regional policy plan, for example, to work on a climate action plan, certainly those are things that we would focus on. We do update that document as per the, the Cape Cod Commission Act. And we have a comprehensive economic development strategy with its own timeframe. We have a regional transportation plan with its own timeframe. So certainly, there are a lot of things that we do on a regular basis that are guiding, you know, our day-to-day, our day-to-day work. A lot of the work that we do also, though, is in response to the towns. And so we want to make sure that we're providing technical assistance, and we're responsive to the needs of the communities. And so that gives us an opportunity to focus on some of those priorities as the, as, so that we can be responsive to the needs of the Cape today. We do work with a lot of different organizations and entities and agencies, and certainly at the state level, at the federal level, the regional scale. So there are a lot of other agencies that we work collaboratively with to make sure that we are kind of understanding the needs of the region and being able to be responsive to those. So hopefully, that answered your question.
Just one follow-up. So it sounds like the regional policy plan is kind of your overarching document. I recall when you had a, some listening workshops, on the Barnstable Land Trust had come forward with a proposal. And I listened to all three of those Zoom meetings. And the sense that I took was that you couldn't entertain their proposal because it was outside of the, the normal review for the regional policy plan. So it sounds like that regional policy plan is really your, your guiding document. And if you're outside of the review process, then you have to kind of wait for the next iteration of that review process? Is that, is that correct? That that really is your preeminent guidance?
It's certainly one of our guiding documents, and that is updated every five years, and it is due to be updated next year. So we will be certainly reaching out with a robust stakeholder process as we engage the community to update that plan.
Thank you, Counsel Lucky. Any other, to you, Counselor Starr?
Thank, thank you, President Levesque. Good afternoon. My, my question is that you did a, a baseline greenhouse gas inventory as part of the climate change, climate action plan. Is this a model for towns? I'm just wondering how you see towns being a partner moving forward with that, or where's it going?
So through the President, that's another great question. And as part of our climate action planning, we did do a greenhouse gas emissions inventory for the Cape. There are greenhouse gas emissions inventories that are statewide and broader, but we really wanted to know what our emissions were as a region. And we do anticipate there, there's an opportunity for towns to also bring that even to more of a granular scale. We are providing and developing some local guidance for communities that want to develop their own local climate action plans. And so that's something that came out of the climate action plan as a recommendation. And we would like to follow through and develop those kinds of guidance documents and guidance materials and tools, so that the communities can put forward their own climate action plans and develop their own greenhouse gas emissions inventories. We do have interest from some of the towns, and so that is something that we'd like to focus on over the course of the next year.
Okay. Thank you. Just, just as a reminder, remember that the climate action plan was created outside of the regular regional policy plan, five-year increments, because citizens asked for it. So there's a citizen's petition. Way, way to go. My other question was, um, you, I sat through a lot of the subcommittee meetings about 35 SCOTTER, just as an, there. And I look at your, your staff list, and there's no, there isn't, there isn't, there doesn't seem to be a staff person with an energy resource background. I mean, you now have an economist, which you didn't have for years. You have transportation people. But when we get into, you know, how many electric vehicle charging stations do we need, what kind of building permits do we, you know? Somebody who knows something about building codes would be good. Somebody who knows something about solar would be great. That was sort of missing in those, those, those subcommittee meetings. So.
All right. Well, thank, thank you for your comments there. Certainly, we have a team of experts that typically work on these, so it's not necessarily one person with the expertise in that particular field. We like to make sure that we have staff that can be responsive in a variety of areas. So certainly, we, you know, I understand, I, I hear, I hear your remarks.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else? Counsel attorney, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you, Director Sanatori, for your information, which is very informational. Thank you, and all the hard work that the Commission does. I did just have one quick question. You mentioned that there are four projects going on in Barnstable regarding water quality that the Commission's involved. Could you just name those off? Do you know what, where?
They're, to my knowledge, and, and I would probably defer to your Town Manager on the details here, but there are four, four projects that were included on the Intended Use Plan, which means that they would then potentially be eligible for the Water Protection Fund. I don't know if, if you want the details of what those projects are, but...
It's all sewer-ing? It's just specific to sewer-ing?
Yes, exactly.
But the four projects, I thought, are they all inclusive in CW?
Why don't we bring up Mark Ells? Town Manager Mark Ells, please.
Good evening, Mark Ells, Town Manager. Yes, they're capital projects that were in last year's CIP that we filed with the State Revolving Fund, got listed on the IUP. So the role the Commission plays with us is multiple. They, they support us in administering the Cape and Islands Wastewater Trust Fund. That's where the last principal subsidy that we received was 25%. Going forward, we'll see each, each year. It's a, you know, based on the revenues that come in. There's an opportunity to try to meet that or, or not. They don't get involved with the details of the project, except later on, on a State Revolving Fund-listed project, the Cape Cod Commission issues a certificate that recognizes its compliance with 208. That's an eligibility criteria. So all of this is tied together. The Cape Cod Commission plays a critical role for us in not just looking within the boundaries of the town, but looking at the challenges we have regionally. Certainly, water and wastewater are those. Funding is a part of those. And they assist us in administering the, the Cape and Islands Trust Fund. They, they assist us in, you know, determining compliance. And then we're able to finance those projects, typically with principal subsidies and low or no interest.
Please.
And there are sewer projects, there are treatment plant upgrades in these particular four cases.
That's kind of where I was going. I was just curious if they were strictly named for four projects, and that's, you know?
Yeah, I can get you the names. Director Santos may know them off the top. Yeah, it's a sewer expansion. We're just looking at the, it's on the IUP list. I can get the names of the projects. Yes, I will, I will. We'll email them to you tomorrow.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Thank you, Town Manager Ells.
Okay. Sorry for the long answer, then.
Anybody else to my right? Any questions, Mr. Christie? Anybody to my left? Counsel Atsulis, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Director Sanatori, thank you for your presentation. I just had a question. Do you happen to, I've heard a statistic about the number of, is it families leaving the Cape, you know, due to lack of housing on an annual basis? Do you, is that, first of all, is that a correct headline? And do you have any information related to that?
So I don't know off the top of my head what the actual number is, but yes, we do have some information on that. And we're trying to dig in a little bit deeper to see if we can even go granular and see if we can figure out on a town-by-town basis what those numbers are. So we are developing information on our data site, which is datacapecod.org. And you can kind of dig in and see a little bit more of the detail there. And I can certainly follow up, once we kind of dig a little bit more into some of the data and the statistics that we are hearing, and then how we can address it.
That's great. Thank you. And just one more, Mr. President, for me. Gosh, I lost my train of thought. I hit my head too many times.
Housing?
Yeah, it was housing. Oh.
Welcome.
The other, we're actually related to that. And thank you, by the way, for being my, part of my brain. As far as the number of people who commute on Cape to work, I'd be interested, I think we'd all be interested to know what those numbers are. We've heard some, I've heard some things floating around, but I just wanted to see if there's a more maybe accurate number out there from a source we can count on.
Yep. Through the President, we've also heard some numbers there, and up to as much as 50% of our workforce commuting. So what we're trying to dive into, some of the detail there is to find out what industries that is. And is there a way we can get a little bit more distinction in terms of who's, who's doing the traveling? So it's another area that we're also keeping our eye on and trying to dig a little bit more into the data. So happy to follow up with you on that one also.
Thank you.
Excellent. And Counsel Mendez, please.
Thank you, President Levesque, and welcome, Director Sanatori. It's, Nick stole both of my questions, but maybe another nuanced way of asking it. Do you know what the shortfall of workforce housing on the Cape is?
I don't off the top of my head, but we are working with the UMass Donahue Institute currently to develop a needs analysis. And so we should, within the next handful of weeks or so, weeks or so, have a better understanding of where some of the challenges are as it relates to the different types of housing that we might be needing.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Mendis. Any other questions? To my right, follow-up, Council Lucky.
Yeah, I just had a follow-up to what Council Atlas asked, sorry. Atlas asked. There we go. If you are looking at those data, could you also look at the number of people that commute off Cape for employment? I think it's important to see that as well, because I know years back, that was a very common thing to be living on the Cape and commuting up towards Boston. So it'd be interesting to see the dynamic of, you know, what's crossing. I think that would be very interesting. Thank you.
Yes, and we certainly agree, and we do have a variety of different data sets that we're trying to cross, kind of, and identify those numbers. So we agree with you.
Sure. Council Schnepp, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Director Sanatori, for your presentation, your responses to our questions. Since we're talking a little bit about economic issues and housing and how it relates, I believe during COVID or the pandemic, the Commission was doing some research on the impact and people working at home. Was there any sort of outcome analysis of that effort?
So that's a great question. We conducted a series of surveys during, and, you know, it was kind of pre, during, and during, and then post. And so certainly, we looked at a lot of the... Trying to get a better sense of some of the population shifts that we were seeing. We know a lot of people came to the region during COVID, so it was really getting a better understanding of who was staying and for how long, and were they populating their second homes, and were they keeping... Were they staying in those second homes? So we've got some information on our data site around that. What we did find is that people did stay, and they made their primary residence here on the Cape. We also conducted a series of business surveys to get an understanding of the business impacts we were seeing due to the pandemic. And so those have shifted, obviously. We saw some of the major areas of focus were the loss of revenues and, of course, things that were impacting our businesses. So things like that have shifted around a bit, but the population shifts were really where we were focused, really trying to get a better understanding of what does that mean for our region in the long term. And so we're still trying to understand what that means. I think that's still going to be a moving target for a little bit longer, but we are still kind of identifying what some of those trends are, what we're seeing. But I think we are seeing that people are here, they stayed.
Council Mendis, please. Thank you, Council Schnepp. Council Mendis.
Thank you, President Levesque. One more question for you. I know it's... Both of these things is a problem, but in your data, is it affordability or inventory the worst problem right now?
It's that combination, honestly. We're seeing those prices for that median sales price of the single-family home being really unaffordable to most of the residents on the Cape. But the lack of inventory, there's really not a lot of inventory. And so when you see those, that graph, and you see that those numbers going up and the inventory numbers going down, you can just see that that... It puts us in more of a challenging situation.
One more question?
Yes, please.
Do you have any data on jobs lost or businesses closed because we can't staff the businesses?
I believe that we do. I can take a look and see what we have there in terms of statistics that might be helpful for you.
Because the reason why I ask is I know a lot of people, while we... A few of us own businesses on here, we can't find staff. And I know restaurants who've been in business in this town for many, many years, you know, they're open three days a week now because they can't find staff. So that's the reason why I was asking. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Mendis. Any other questions? I will say just thank you. Thank you for being here tonight, and I think, oh, wow, Town Manager Ellis. This is a little out of line, but I'll allow it. Town Manager Ellis, please.
Apologize. I'm out of line.
No, sir. It's okay.
Thank you for being here. Real quick, four projects, sorry.
To Councilonary's question earlier, point of reference.
Yes, sir. Four projects listed in the 2023 IUP. There's one that's improvements at the wastewater treatment plant. Actually, we're looking at moving that forward to a future year, but it's listed this year. Most likely, will be listed if we move it forward to a future year. The sewer-ing through Main Street Centerville. The wastewater pump station improvements, and so those are existing pump stations, and then sewer extension and vacuum sewer removal. So those are the four projects.
Thank you, Manager Ellis. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Town Manager Ellis and your Crackerjack team for getting that information to us exponentially. I would just say thank you. You don't have to stand there, but I just want to say thank you. I think the key word is responsiveness. Your leadership of the Commission, since I've been a counselor, you know, first experience with Chapter H and what's happening in Independence Park, the responsiveness in regards to conservation and housing and trying to make those things coexist is a very difficult task to do, and I just want to say thank you. And for trying to find the best decisions for dealing with those who fight to be right, and I think the Commission is really trying to help get it right for our communities and for the entire Cape Cod. So I just want to say thank you. Really appreciate your leadership. Fred Sheeragh goes for your leadership and your representation in Barnstable. And again, I just want to say thank you and recognize my experience and what I see from being president of the council for going on three years. So thank you.
Perfect. Thanks so much. I appreciate the opportunity.
Okay. So again, thank you for that, Town Manager Ellis. Thank you for the information and communications as a whole. And I would ask if... Council Rapgertetti, please, if you can help me act on the minutes. Item number seven on the agenda.
Yes, Mr. President. I move that we accept the minutes of March 2, 2023, as presented.
Second.
First and second. And any discussion? Okay. Not seeing any. If you could raise your hand and show your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
I think that's unanimous.
I have to abstain.
Okay. One abstention for Council Atslos, please. Thank you. And moving on to council communications from elected officials, boards, committees, and staff, commission reports, correspondence, and announcements. I will first look to my left, see if Council Atslos has his hand up, and then Council Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President. So just wanted to follow up on Council Rapgertetti's comments about the meeting that we had the night before last regarding the Centerville sewage project, sewer project coming through there. It was an excellent presentation by Griffin. Newly hired Kelly Collop, he was also in attendance. She was very helpful in setting up that meeting and also helping to create the signs that I went... That we went and put out at 15 different locations around the village of Centerville south of 28. It was a well-attended meeting. I believe there'll be that many... Significantly more people watching it on TV since it's now been posted there. As a follow-up to that meeting on April 4 at the Adult Community Center, also known as the Senior Center, next to BIS, also known as the Middle School on Route 28 in Hyannis, from 6:00 to 8:00 on the 4th, we'll be having a meeting regarding road safety issues on Main Street Corridor and the area, pedestrian safety, crosswalks, speeding, and what that may look like after our sewage project goes through there and potentially the Park City project that may go through there as well. So that's again April 4, 6:00 to 8:00 at the Adult Community Center in Hyannis. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Atslos. Council Clark, please.
Thank you very much, President Levesque. I did see Chief Sonnen been here earlier, but I do want to give my kudos to the Barnstable Police Chief and his staff. It made me very proud of our police department to read Lawrence Brown's editorial in the Cape Cod Times. In this article, it was clear that the Barnstable Police Department operates with integrity and respectful policies that are strikingly different from some of the notorious police departments that have had negative publicity in recent months. So I'm glad that our police department policies serve our town with the highest level of operating standards, and I wanted to recognize that was reflected well in our community. Secondly, I'd like to put in a pitch for the upcoming Household Hazardous Waste Day on April 1 held at the transfer station from 9:00 to noon. Residents are welcome to bring the hazardous waste. You can find the information on the website and in the newsletter, e-newsletter. And even if a resident does not have a transfer station sticker, a resident can participate in the hazardous waste collection with proof of residency. And if I need to be corrected on any of that, Director Santos can straighten the news. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Clark. Any other announcements on this side, please? Looking to my right, any announcements? Council Schnepp, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a couple of announcements. The Appointments Committee did meet this Tuesday, and we will be bringing a slate of candidates for various committees to our meeting on April 6. I just wanted to let both the councilors know and the public that we are entering into the process whereby the fiscal year ends on 6/30. There's a number of committee terms that expire on 6/30, so there will be a number of our current committee members that will be up for a reappointment. That is an open process. Those are not necessarily a guarantee that someone who holds that seat will be reappointed. So those who might be interested in some of our boards and committees and have previously thought there were no vacancies, please check our website, because those will be listed as potential vacancies for this next fiscal year. Our town council administrator, Cynthia Lovell, will be sending out communications to all existing committee members whose terms expire, and we ask that they respond promptly of their interest to serve another term so that we can decide whether we will move through the reappointment process or whether we'll need to schedule interviews. So I think that pretty much captures that piece of information. The second thing I wanted to mention is, was it just a week ago, the Cape and Islands Municipal Leaders Association had a meeting out at the Cape Tech School, and I want to commend our town manager. He was one of the presenters with Mark Forrest and... Oh, boy.
Kevin Galigan?
Kevin Galigan from the Town of Orleans regarding the municipalities on Cape Cod communicating with the state and specifically the Department of Environmental Protection about the proposed regulations. And I think our coming together and having a common voice, I think, is going to be very effective in making sure those regulations are really helpful and not detrimental to all of us on the Cape. But at that meeting, we also did have a short presentation from Brian Baumgartner from the county about the kind of newly constituted Barnstable County Aqua Fund, which will help residents replace septic systems and also with sewer connections. And I think it would be great to invite him to come to a town council meeting just to give us a little bit more information about that. And the last thing I wanted to mention, I'm going to take your thunder, is on April 1st...
Oh, man. I'm the Minister of Fun. Go ahead.
No. I get one shot at it, right?
It's okay. No joke.
There's going to be an Easter egg hunt at Burgess Park on April 1, and I missed 10 o'clock, right? 10:00 in the morning. And very limited parking, so try to get there as early as possible. There'll be two separate areas for the children. The younger ages will be in the infield, in the fenced area, and then the older children will be on the outside. So it's a town-wide event. Everyone's invited, but it will be sponsored by the Marson's Mills Village Association. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment, questions in regards to that? Okay. All right. Not seeing any. We'll close that part of our... And now it is time for, we have on our agenda, just under Communications, a summary of the Town of Barnstable Communications Survey done by Director Poyant.
Lynn Poyant, Director of Communications. It's been such a long time since I've presented, it was before COVID, that I did old school and gave you a package of the PowerPoint presentation, which will be on the website immediately following this presentation. So the communications staff, which is myself, Sarah Beal Fletcher, our Channel 18 Station Manager, Paula Hershey, our Digital Content Manager, have... Since we've been able to shift from the public health emergency with COVID, decided that we needed to really focus on ways to communicate with our public. So during last fall, we created a survey that was included in the town council or in the town clerk's census. And we've known for years that the census is a tremendous way to reach all registered voters within the town. The nice thing about hacking onto the town clerk's census is they're paying for the postage, so we're only paying for the insert. And we know that it's very successful in reaching our residents, and we wanted... We were hoping to get about 2,000 surveys back, but because that's what the Senior Center, when they were the Senior Center, the Council on Aging, when they were doing a needs assessment, they got approximately 2,000 back. And the UMass Center for Gerontology thought that was a phenomenal response, and it helped create a number of paths for the Council on Aging to follow. We received over 6,500 responses for our survey. So the town council has created their strategic plan, and in their strategic plan, you have the quality of life surrounded by the programs and services that are offered by the town, and then you have communications and finance, which encompass them. And we want to make sure that what we're doing is that we're reaching people where they are and that we're reaching all of our citizens. So I don't want to do PowerPoint karaoke. You have it in writing, but we do have a statement of work. The communications team, beyond Sarah and Paula, include our webmaster, Kevin Decolibis, and we have two video specialists in Stonedow and David Hevner. I have to say that communications had been part of the Community Services Department for a long time, but it was in January of 2020 that you hired your first communications director. A few weeks later, COVID hit, and then we had a 2020 federal census, which is how we get money for different programs and services. That was a very controversial census during that timeframe, and we also had a federal election unlike any other. So a lot of our time was focused on those things. So our town website is really one of the number-one ways that we reach our residents. And in January 1 of 2019, we unveiled a new website, which was a great upgrade from what we had previously. But like anything, as soon as you introduce it, it kind of becomes outdated, and you need to upgrade it. Everybody wants real estate on their homepage, and that's really difficult because it makes that you have to scroll a long time to get everything that you want. But there's 304 viewable pages on our town website, and those pages hold 357,000 files. Last year, 2.8 million people viewed our website, and more than half of those people were viewing them from mobile devices. So some of the sub-websites that have been created over the past couple of years include Barnstable Health, which was dealing with the COVID situation. We created Barnstable Water Resources, not only for the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan, but as was mentioned by Kelly in her presentation that hopefully you will watch, Cyanobacteria. People want to know about beach quality, so that was part of it there. There was a website that was created for the Barnstable LCP, and then we also have a Barnstable eNews website so that we can direct people that are viewing eNews into one location. Our eNews, the first edition of it came out on October 10 of 2008, and it's gone through a variety of changes over the year, but we currently have over 6,000 subscribers. And during this process, we put over 2,000 new email addresses into this database, and we did it as they were coming in. We didn't want to wait for them to come all at once so that if somebody responded in January, the next week, they were getting the newest issue of eNews. Our social media, we have our Facebook page, which has over 13,000 followers. Instagram has 1,779. Instagram, we created in December of 2021, and its purpose was, because it's really a visual platform, was to show the beauty of the Town of Barnstable. There's a lot... It's very associated with water and things of that nature. Channel 18, we have our YouTube page, we have Twitter, and we find that Twitter, especially in emergencies, is highly regarded. And then new in the past year is Nextdoor, and we have 9,144 followers. And the thing about Nextdoor is you're able to do it by zip code, so if there's something that's village-specific, you're able to do it that way. So you hear with the terms peg a lot, and we have a Peg Enterprise Fund, and that stands for Public Education and Government Access. So the Cape Media Center, which is Comcast Channel 99, is our public station. Our education station is Barnstable High School's Channel 22, which is B2B TV, and then Channel 18 is our government access channel. So the content that matters theme came October of 2019, so just before COVID, and so we kind of had to put a stop on what we had intended to do, but we have definitely ramped up probably within the past year, getting back to what it was that we had hoped to do. Meeting courage has always been number one, and it will continue to be number one. We have a documentary unit. We have a public service announcement unit. We have a studio unit, a current events unit, and Barnstable 101, which is teaching folks in the town general information. What was featured on the website last week and this week was how to apply... What was featured on the website last week and this week was how to apply for a beach sticker, something that people, you know, have been asking for for a long time. Oh, and one of the things that I should have mentioned under social media, you'll see the Archive Social logo in the upper right-hand corner. All of our social media is considered to be public record, and so we have to archive all, everything. And we do it through a platform called Archive Social. So Channel 18 was down intermittently last week, and that's because we have some exciting news that Councilor Schnepp is going to be very glad to hear about. But recent technology upgrades included the audio upgrades to the hearing room. Channel 18 just last week was relocated from the fourth floor to the second floor of Town Hall. Closed captioning is available for all live meetings on Channel 18, and it's also available on our videos on YouTube. And coming in April of 2023, our high-definition channel. So if you live in the town of Barnstable, you will be able to watch Channel 18 on, unfortunately, it's not something that ends in an 18, on Channel 1072, beginning April 5th, in high definition. You can access our live stream from the homepage, and you can also do video on demand in YouTube, which has 24/7 access on the town's website. We introduced a podcast last year, and it's called Discover Barnstable. It's been very successful, and I have to say that last week's episode was about lifeguards, and we trended a lower age demographic, which was really exciting. 60% of our listeners were under the age of 30, and so that was really great. But we've had Town Clerk Ann Quirk numerous times explaining a number of things. Barnstable Police Chief Sonnabend, Superintendent Sarah Hearn is this week's podcast guest. And you can always go back, and if you haven't, you know, stayed in tune, you can always listen to older episodes if you'd like. The annual report, as those of you that went to MMA know, we won the first place for a city of our size or a town of our size. So with regards to the communication survey, I really want to thank Ann Quirk and her staff, because every day, they would be getting tubs of mail, and they would take them, and they would separate them out, so that they got the census and we got the survey. 22,400 surveys were mailed in late December, early January. 1,019 were delivered, returned as undeliverable, and 6,567 surveys were returned to us. So the pile that you see of surveys represents the over 6,000 surveys that we received. The pile on the left-hand side are the pile that we still haven't gotten all of the comments on. We had a tremendous team assist us in inputting the information that was, you know, check-a-box, so that we could have some statistics of what was there. But we still, there's a lot of comments, and I have to say, I brought down a sample of 100, and you can see that people have written front, back, every which way. Some people have attached pages of documentation, and we want to make sure that we capture everything. So that's there. I had explained earlier that the survey, by including it with the census, was at a greatly reduced cost. And I want to thank again Sarah and Paula for their help. Paula is our data guru, and so the next slides are representative of the respondents who filled out the survey, but not every respondent answered every question. So our demographics, and there's, this slide is fine, but there are some of our slides where the list does not go in priority order, so I will let you know what the priority was. We tried to get it to work, but it just wasn't going to go that way for us. So this slide is actually accurate. 41.7% of our respondents were 61 to 75 years of age. The next highest was for 75-year-olds, which was at 29%. And then it went down to 46 to 60-year-olds. So while we did get some of the younger folks, not all of them responded. And our gender, it was female outnumbered male respondents. So what we wanted to know is where do residents get town news? And the number-one place that they get it is social media. The second place that they get it is newspapers. The third, online news agencies. And the fourth is the town website. The newsletters of Councilors Clark, Rap, Grissette, and Starr were cited as a source of town news on a number of occasions. What information are residents interested in? The top three are the top three: community and events, emergency, community alerts, and land use and development. Have you visited the town's website in the past three months? Yes, 64-plus percent was yes. And then how often do you visit the website? Number one was once every few months, number two was occasionally, and number three was never. And this was a fascinating thing, because a lot of people, not a lot of people, a number of people said that they didn't know that the town had a website. And then further inside their survey, they were saying they live in the town of Gatuit, or they live in the town of Ostrville. And so they weren't aware that they lived in the town of Barnstable. So that's an education process that we need to go through. Under social media platforms, number one was Facebook, if they use it. Number two was none, and number three was YouTube. And then for those that follow the town, Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter were our high ranking. And if you do have social media, we would encourage you to follow the town, to share our posts, and help get the word out for what we have there. We asked people if whether or not they had watched or attend meetings, and 24.7% said yes, with 75.3% saying no. We, of those that attended meetings, did they provide public comment? And we had 91.6% said yes, and 8.4% said no.
Wait, did that say the reverse here?
Oh, I'm sorry. Said no. Yes, that's correct. I was wrong. So, thank you. They said no. The high, the high number was no. With COVID-19 safety concerns aside, would you normally prefer to attend an informative event in person or virtually? And it was pretty evenly split. 52.3% said virtual, 47.7% said in person. We asked if whether or not they subscribe to the weekly eNews, and 78.2% said no, 21.8% said yes, and those numbers have obviously risen, because over one-third of those responding to the survey are now new subscribers to eNews. We asked, what do you think the town does well in regards to communications? And I'm going to have to make sure that I get the order right. Number one was timely, accurate, and current information across all platforms of communication. A good balance of types of information was number two. Good social media presence was number three. Four, easy to access and find. Number five was good variety of mediums, videos, live stream, face-to-face. And then this question is, what do we need to improve? And you'll find that it kind of parallels the responses that we received here. So number one was timelier, more accurate, current information across all platforms. Number two was more transparency. Number three, provide a mobile app. Number four, more social media communication. And number five, improve the website. So 61.6% of the respondents rated the town's efforts in communicating at a grade seven or higher. With the number one, number one was the five, which 38.5%. Number two was 8%, or gave us a rating of eight. Number three was tied for seven and 10, and number four was number nine. So what have we learned? Our community wants to hear from us regularly and on a variety of subjects and on a variety of platforms. Many of our new residents are not aware of town operations and communications. The town website is fragmented, and the homepage is too busy. Online payments are in multiple places and should be centralized, and there is no one-size-fits-all. Our next steps, we're looking to create a new resident resource page to help new residents acclimate to town services and programs and welcome them to the town of Barnstable. Schedule Quarterly Communications Day at the Adult Community Center and the Youth and Community Center. We heard from a lot of our folks that they're elderly and they don't know how to do certain things, and they would be more than happy to do it if someone were, would be willing to show them. Work with departments and divisions to plan communications outreach for town-wide initiatives, including a communications budget for items such as direct mail. In 2021, we had provided two trainings to town staff. One was called leveraging the communications program, and the other was let's get social. We wanted to make sure that if people were working on social media, they knew what they could and couldn't do, and how best to be engaging on social media. Next, we're talking about creating a payment page with links to all payment portals, because that was also something that came up a number of times. And offer a workshop on town communications to civic and business associations, so that they can help their membership learn more about the town of Barnstable. And I have to say, I really want to thank Candy Hurwitz, who wrote an op-ed piece in the Cape Cod Times Sunday paper. She mentioned people signing up for eNews twice. And so you can't get a better, you know, push than that from a resident asking for that. And she's, she and her husband are actually currently participating in the Inside Barnstable Town Government Program this session. So we like quotes and communications, so to effectively communicate, we must realize that we are all different in the way that we perceive the world, use this understanding as a guide to our communication with others. So I want to thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Director Poyant, for the excellent presentation and all your hard work, your staff making those happen. I know a lot of, long hours went into logging those surveys in. And again, thank you to your staff for executing that properly. Looking to my left, is there any questions? Council Atzless, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Director Poyant. I always want to call you Lynn. So on, in the survey, in the section, what information are residents interested in? I see at the bottom, it says road construction and traffic. Do you, does that include things like the CWMP?
It does, and I will tell you that people were very responsive in their thoughts when they were writing their comments down.
Okay.
We, I can tell you that in the comment section, when we asked people what it was that they went to the website, four, the assessors came out, number one, property lookup. And that shows in the statistics that are on the website. Number two is paying taxes or online bill pay. And then the transfer station was like number three, beach stickers is number four, and then road construction was number five.
Okay. And I just, I think this kind of dovetails, and I know that with Kelly Colley being, coming on to DPW Communications, I think what we're finding is, for whatever the reasons are, there's, oftentimes, people will come to meetings about CWMP, and they're hearing about it for the first time, which some of us still find amazing. But, so I think obviously we need to continue to have better messaging and being out there in the community and letting them know what's, what's happening with it. And now we're getting into people wanting to get as specific as possible, even though we're, in some cases, we can't with class associated with and things like that. So I, that's why I was just curious, and it's, it's reflective of the fact that there's still a lot of people out there who are hearing about this for the first time, or they're not getting the accurate information. So I think that's important, that we make sure we're putting it out there, and it sounds like that you're working on that, and I know DPW is as well. So thank you.
I have to say that Kelly's terrific. We have created a number of tools through the communications program, like including Waze, Google Maps, and things like that, so that when Kelly was hired, she was able to hit the ground running on a number of things. The fact that she's embedded in DPW, she has so much knowledge that we're able to work together. We try to have a weekly meeting with her, and we're really happy that she's helping us get the word out there. And she's also doing a lot of one-on-one communications
Yes.
with people, which is very time-consuming.
Well, I'm happy to hear that you're working together. I think it's going to be, make things even better, so thank you.
Any comment? To my left, any questions? Director Poyant. Okay. Looking to my right, anyone? Council, near you, please. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see it handwritten. You gotta look at me. You gotta look at me. You gotta make eye contact with me. Council Mendez, please. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Hi, Director. Just a quick question for you. Do we have any strategies to possibly get a little younger demographic coming to us? Because, you know, it's great that we have the older demographic, but it's people that always participate in these things. And we're lacking working families in a younger demographic who actually are going to be living in this town in 30 years.
Right.
So is there a strategy that you can think of?
We are actually working on a number of things and engaging the youth commission. Those poor kids, they get dragged into everything. But, you know, one of the things that we told them when I was the Director of Community Services was that this CWMP is an opportunity for them. If they go to get an education in engineering or construction or something like that, they would be able to come back here and work and have basically a guaranteed job for the next 30 years. So we're, we're open to suggestions. I mean, this, this is a really big listening exercise, because when we would show up at meetings, we would ask, how did you hear about this? A lot of people, the only source of information for them is the Cape Cod Times. Now, we can send out all the press releases we want. As a matter of fact, there are six people from the Cape Cod Times that are on our media list. And how often do things get picked up? They don't. So there's a number of things that you have to do, like pay for advertising, pay for mailings. The signs, the lawn signs have been a terrific addition to any communications program. But the problem with some of them is if you put too much information on them, they can't be read when you're driving by them. So there's, you know, kind of that kind of balance. And, you know, being at the job fair last week and talking to the kids about what their future holds, our town manager is very youth-driven. He wants to make sure that we appeal to the youth and get them involved in different things. And I would love to have an intern. I'm putting a pitch out there, from either the high school or from Cape Cod Community College, or someone who's home for the summer to help us. I have to say that we started our Facebook page in 2008, and it was done by our youth commission president, Mark Raymond. He was a freshman in college, and we, that's who we needed to, to help us in that way of communication. And unfortunately, once he did that, all of us older people got into Facebook, so all the kids fell off. And some of, when I mentioned that all of our social media is public records, we can't do WhatsApp, or we can't do Snapchat, because those can't be recorded as public records. So there are certain things that we can't do, and some of the kids have told us, quite frankly, they don't want us on there. But we, we do, we're listening.
Yeah, just a follow-up. What I'm more, what I'm more concerned about is school-aged children's families, their parents. And I've talked about this quite often. Very few of them are going to come home and go on the town of Barnstable website. They're going to come home from work, they're going to eat dinner with their families, they're going to help their kids with homework, hopefully catch a football game or a baseball game, and then they're going to go to bed and repeat the next day. Have you tried to talk to the superintendent about possibly, you know, being able to get communication to those people through the children?
So we work with the superintendent. We're on a community group that she has, and we're trying to expand our communication trying to expand our communications with her, and she's been really good as far as providing information to us. And the next step will be for us to provide information to her.
It's just because that's, as a parent, when our kids would bring home something from school, we would always read that. You know, we're not going to necessarily
The backpack.
Yeah, we're not going to necessarily, you know, go on, go online and all that stuff because they just don't have the time.
And I have to say that during the pandemic, we were really lucky that we were able to participate in the backpack programs, and we did it in three different languages. And that was incredibly helpful at that time, but we need for it to expand.
Thank you, Council Mendez. One of those questions is regards to using the school. And Vice President Cullums aren't here, but I know that that would have been a question, and I know that's a passion of hers, is using the school and using the youth and having those conversations, quite honestly, as Lisa said, at the dinner table. And in educating, you know, you know, the kids actually educating parents. When the Barnstable Youth Commission did the presentation on the CWMP, I think a lot of people found out about the sewer project through their kids because of the presentations done through our youth commission. So I think that's paramount. So I'll have further comment on that, but looking to my right, are there any comments? Council Neary, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Director Poyant. Just as someone who's actually done direct mail and those type of, you know, efforts in marketing, if you're lucky, you get a 2% return, and this is, you know, 20, it's 30%, over 30%. So I guess my comment would be, and it's just a comment, a kudos for what the department has done, and also the Clerk's Office as well. I would, a chance to guess that those 65, 67 members of the community are probably voters, and you could probably do something with that list, you know, maybe farm it out to the highest bidder with the election coming up in November. I think people would be willing to pay attention to that list, you know.
The census list is the voter list. I have to say that when we did the sewer assessment ordinance, when we had those public meetings a number of years ago, we used the assessors list, which was property owners, because they were the ones that were going to be affected. There's been a lot of turnover with some of the properties, so the list that we had previously wouldn't be valid. The other thing that we found very expensively was that the town of Barnstable owns a lot of property in the town of Barnstable. So we would make sure that all of those parcels were no longer included.
Thank you, Council Neary. Any follow-up? Any, any other questions? Council Schnapp, please. Don't be afraid, raise your hand, I need to know.
Thank you, Mr. Levesque, and thank you, Director Poyant. This was just a very comprehensive report of all the wonderful things that are going on in communications here. And I probably am one of the dinosaurs, because the website is probably where I end up, and of those 2.8 million views, I, I mean, I'm a good percentage of that. I'm on there all the time. And speaking of which, one of the features that I really appreciate is how quickly the staff puts up the videos of our committee meetings and town. I mean, if you happen to have missed a meeting, and it's there. And so it's an incredible service to not only those of us who want to see what's going on the means, but to the town to have those. The one thing I would love to have on our website is a more intelligent, you know, if there's some chat box or whatever those chat, GTP, some ways that our website was more searchable, because it's just almost impossible to sometimes know where to find information that's on the website, but you just have to, you don't always have the logic to know where to go.
That's one of the things that has been identified repeatedly in this survey.
Thank you, Council Schnapp. Council Rapgusetti, please.
Hi, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Lynn. And you mentioned my website. My website is very intimate with the town of Barnstable. I do a lot of linking on my website. I get a lot of hits, and the e-news on Fridays is one of the most popular on my webpage, and I appreciate the thoroughness of that newsletter. You know, this community has lost our local newspaper, essentially. We no longer have, you know, the benefit of the Barnstable Patriot, the weekly. Really, it's been taken over by Gannett and Cape Cod Times, which has gone national. So there's very little local at that level. And I know a lot of my constituents in the town of Ktewitt read the newspaper, or that's where they look for information, is still on the printed page. And I'm not saying you should print the page, but it's an opportunity for the town to assemble all what's going on in our community and maybe do it village by village, maybe do a, like the Barnstable Patriot used to focus on village. Once a month, they would highlight a village, maybe an opportunity for the town to focus on what's going on in that village and in concert with the civic associations, whatnot. But I also am on your page a lot, and there's a wealth of information. The one thing I like too about your videos is especially the long drawn-out and the council meetings, you can skip right to the chapter that's relevant to you, and it really makes searching a lot easier to, and viewing, so you don't have to sit through the whole meeting. And as I was saying to my fellow counselor here, you know, with you going to HD, we've got to make sure our nose hairs are clipped. So look forward to that, but thank you so much, Lynn, for the effort.
Thank you. And I have to say that inside your packet of information, you have a packet separate that is focused on content that matters, which is Channel 18. They've worked really hard with what they do, and the agenda chaptering feature was just added a couple of years ago. I know that it helps me with the summary that I prepare each week in the e-news, so thank you.
Thank you, Council Rapgusetti. Council Cusack, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Lynn, fantastic job, some really interesting insights to our community. I was just wondering if you might highlight any responses from any of our residents from the disabled community? Or you maybe could highlight some of the strides that you've taken proactively to make sure that we communicate with our fellow residents who might be disabled.
We do have a number of people, especially because they were elderly and disabled, that talked about things that we could possibly do to help them. One of them was to provide trainings, even if we created as a video that we can feature at some point. And I have to say that the closed captioning feature was brought up by the Disability Commission, and there were a number of different programs before Sarah found one that worked appropriately. So, but that's a great question. And as we go through the 2,000 surveys that are left, I will let you know if there's any additional comments.
Thank you, Council Cusack. Council Levesque, please.
Thank you, President Levesque. I won't duplicate any of the other comments. I really appreciate everything everyone's said. I agree with everything that all the counselors brought up, all very key points. I will highlight a couple of things that struck me, about 91.6 of the people not making public comments. And that's something close to me. I have a lot of empathy for folks, and that's why I engage on social media. I've been told that's just too dangerous, but I do it because I meet people where they are, and I love that you're out on social media. And that's why I complimented John Julius, because he does come and he speaks at public meetings, but then he does engage, and he really does draw out a public comment on social media. So that's, that's important, and I glean a lot of information from participating in social media. I will respond to people too, so I do that. And also, again, just to tag along, I'm in the demographic of the older women, which seem to be the respondents, but I'm also in the demographic of having four school-aged children, so I can straddle both of those worlds. And I know my children are getting a little bit older now, but when they were younger, exactly what Jeff Mendez is talking about, those folders are priceless, because you don't have time. You have no time when you have these younger children. And I would absolutely go through that, so that's a terrific resource. But thank you again, and I, I think I told you when your survey came out, that's why you got so many responses, because it was a beautiful survey.
Thank you very much.
Really nice.
We appreciate that. And I have to say that we're really blessed to have Paula Hershey be our digital contact manager. She understands social media, and there are a lot of pitfalls as it relates to government and social media, and she's the one that follows that closely with different trainings and things of that nature.
Thank you. Council Starr, by any chance? Okay. I just want to make note that Counselor Neary, Council Mendez, and Council Atzlis have, so we have quorum, but, and we will be taking a break momentarily, but I just, I just want to say thank you for the, you know, the survey. Obviously been in tune to the data, it's been coming in, being in my position, and also, I know Counselor Cullum would like to say, I know we've been talking about this and what we kind of want to see coming out of this, and a lot of the, you know, communication, a lot of the job as a town counselor, my job as a town council, and I take it very seriously, is two things, well, there's a lot of things, but two things I'd like to mention. One thing is, is that I am, I look at this, and it's a lot of great work, and, but I'm honestly afraid. This reveals to me that we have a young demographic that is underrepresented and underinvolved. Now, some of it's by choice, like you said, right? They don't want us there, so to speak, or this or that. But the bottom line is, they work here, they get education here, they want to live here. I'm very concerned that this survey, if mailed out to someone who's a non-English-speaking person, which we just talked about in this meeting, that that is one of our highest-growing demographics. I'm going to say, I'm going to throw on a limb, there's a good chance that they didn't respond to the survey. So I am very passionate about the fact that those people are still represented, and what has to happen if, if we really want to get their information. And this has nothing to do with you or your staff, but what needs to happen is each and every individual, we have to go where they are. You want to talk to the Brazilian community, you go to the Brazilian Health Ministry, you go to their churches. They're 20, 25%. They fill out the survey, maybe, and they are a huge part of our, and I, and I know I pound this all the time, but that is a huge part of our demographic. And as we talk about things, and as far as communication goes, and some of these comments that we get on our Facebook page, it's false information. How do we deal with that? That is a, I know, Counselor Cullum, that she's mentioned that in these meetings, and again, I don't want to speak for her, but at the same time, I, I can hear her voice, so to speak, and I can, I know that that's an issue, because a lot of these comments on there, some of them are good, some of them are great, and even if they disagree, that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about flat-out false information, agenda-driven people who do not want to get it right, who just want something to stay the same, and not be willing to even compromise in some sort of, to, to help these other demographics, because they're working three jobs, that's why they can't answer the survey. So how do we address that? You know? And I have real concerns about some of these comments on social media, just like Facebook in general. You know, during different elections, it's misinformation, and it's wide open, and it's a real concern. I'm sorry, what was the, the category that is a, the neighbor?
Next door.
Next door, thank you. That especially leaves a little bit more room in regards to that, because I believe they can start their own conversations, they don't have to have a topic that the town references, they can start their own. And they, you know, they can just take over a certain conversation, start a narrative that's, quite honestly, sprinkled with a little bit of truth. So I guess, and again, this is a heavy question, and I want to give you every opportunity to respond, but how do we address that? How will we, you know, can we, quite honestly, can we leave comments on Facebook, you know, can we, on certain topics, can we just shut it off? And I don't want to shut anybody out, per se, but again, misinformation, this council, we spend most of our time, a lot of our time, you know, basically debunking misinformation, so.
So with regards to social media, we're working with Legal to create a policy that would be on our pages, which will enable us to remove people or, you know, set a standard. And if people don't follow the standard, then we can boot them, things like that. Right now, we can't. Social media is held on other servers, it's not held on a town server, and there are certain things that are associated with it that you can and cannot do. So you have to be very careful in how you approach it, because it can open you up to lawsuits, and, and so hopefully there'll be some improvements going down the line with that. I have to say that we consider this as a start. The whole reason why that we did the survey was we're trying to create a communications strategic plan. And in order to inform that strategic plan, and what we needed to include, we needed to find out from our residents how we can reach them, and so that we can make sure that that's baked into whatever it is that we, we come up with. So this, this is a first step. It's, we've got a long way to go. There's a number of steps that will be coming further down the line. And I have to say that one of the things, it's, some things you get really excited and you say, you want to do this, you want to do that, you want to do the next thing, but in order to have sustainability, you have to layer them. You have to let something stick and then add something, you know, and things of that nature. And that's what we're intending to do with this, but we, we needed to start somewhere, and we felt that the survey was the place to start.
Thank you. And again, I think it's, it's valuable, and I appreciate all the hard work that went through that, for sure. Council Clark.
Thank you very much, President Levesque. And it occurred to me when the discussion was, some concern was raised over the low turnout of the young people. And I took the survey, and I volunteered with the clerk staff to help, help collate some of that. But it occurred to me that there's one piece of paper that goes to a household, so it's probably not surprising that the mother filled it out, and there's more, more gender-wise, the female response, and the kids are probably doing their homework, and she or he or the head of household probably filled it out on behalf of the family, so.
And if they're not of voting age, so it would be 18 and older that would be.
So I realized that, that with that one sheet of paper, it probably didn't, wasn't able to reflect the spectrum of the residents in that household. So I just, just thinks it's an explanation of how those, how that data worked out.
To your point as well, Council Clark, because we have a older demographic to begin with, so. The Barnstable County is one of the oldest, you know, so it's not so much that, my concern was more of there are young people that aren't necessarily being reached and, and moving forward, you know, how do we reach them?
And I have to say that the demographics, how they came out here, they kind of matched the 2020 federal census for what our age groups are, so.
Very good, thank you. Council Atzlis, did you have your hand up? Okay, thank you. Anybody else follow up? Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate the presentation and.
Thank you, we really appreciate your time.
Yes, absolutely. You have to give that, all that hard work, a good presentation, so thank you. And with that, I now would say, let's take a five-minute break, a recess, and we'll come right back. Thank you. Thank you.
Both the Marine Environmental Affairs Staff and the Town's Waterways Committee. The current authority vessels are twin screw and have no bow or stern thrusters. The Authority's three new vessels, all identical, will each have two bow thrusters and one stern thruster in addition to their twin screws. They will be highly maneuverable and will be able to maintain fixed position over a GPS determined spot. With the added capability, the vessels will be much safer to operate within the Hyannis area waterways. The second part of this rationale is the consolidation of multiple agreements. The content of the three agreements, when they're read together, is somewhat outdated and confusing. Therefore, the parties have agreed in principle that they should work collaboratively to consolidate the agreements into a single document that will not affect the substantive rights of the parties, but that will restate and affirm their respective substantive rights and obligations. The requested vote affirms that the parties' obligations to undertake and complete this task in good faith. The vote also authorizes the town manager to execute the consolidated agreement when the rewrite is complete. So to put a little bit of clarification on that, the Steamship Authority, and I don't want to seal too much of Mr. Davis's presentation, but they came to the town requesting a modification in length so that three new vessels that they have purchased can operate under the agreement. That was taken through our waterways committee and approved. Prior to coming here, and the reason that I'm here rather than Director Lawson, is our officer in review with legal and staff felt that it was appropriate time with these agreements being 25 years old, and a lot of things have changed and they need some clarification. We felt that it was also time to take a look at them holistically and consolidate them. So it's certainly in your purview to take these two individually if you don't want us to do that, but just wanted to clarify that the Steamship came forth in good faith asking for the 10 feet. The second part of this was clearly the town saying that we think it's time that not, you know, if we're going to modify this by 10 feet, we should look at the agreements in their entirety, take the time to do that right. So with that, I have Bob Davis from the Steamship here to give a brief presentation. I'd also like to recognize the, our representatives to the Board of Governors and the Port Council, Mr. Bob Jones and Mr. Bud Briedt, as well as Derek Lawson, our Director of Marine Environmental Affairs. So with that, your permission, I'd like to go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Davis.
Yes, please. Welcome, Mr. Davis.
You may just sign in as well.
Oh, you don't have to sign in, sir.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing us an opportunity to address the Town Council. I'm Bob Davis. I'm the General Manager of the Steamship Authority, and as Andy pointed out, I'm here with Bob Jones, the Bonstables Representative to our Board, and Bud Briedt, the Bonstables Representative to our Port Council. I'm also here with Mark Ammison, the Director of Marine Operations, and Charles Montero, who is our Port Captain. So in order to achieve our mission of to operate safe and efficient, reliable transportation to the islands of Martha's Vineyard and Nantucket, the Authority recently purchased three used offshore supply vessels, OSVs. These OSVs are approximately 12 years old and have been unused or cold-stacked for approximately seven years at this point. These vessels, the MB Aquina, the MB Monomoy, and the MB Bonstable, will be replacing the Authority's current freight vessels, the Gayhead, the Contamer, and Sanctity, which are near and near end of their useful life. These new-to-us OSVs require modifications to convert them to use as ferry vessels, as well as system overhauls due to the extended time spent in layup status. Modifications include the creation of passenger spaces, safety improvements, removal of supply vessel equipment, decking rearrangements, and overhauling the sterns to match the existing dock arrangements at the Authority's terminals. The Aquina, Monomoy, and Bonstable are identical sister ships and have similar specs. The current overall length of the vessels right now is 240 feet, while the registered length, which is measured at the waterline, is approximately 222 feet. The beam of the vessels is 54 feet, and these OSVs, as Andy had pointed out, are expected to be highly maneuverable because of their propulsion systems. And with two bow thrusters and a single stern thruster, they have 950 horsepower thrusters, so over 2,850 horsepower combined. And on the first slide here, we tried to illustrate where those are. There's red boxes on the bow and on the stern, which illustrate where the thrusters are. And also gives, and the top image gives some direction as to terms of the vessels, they have, in the stern, they have a square stern, and all of our vessels require a radius in order to match up with our fendering system and with our transfer bridges. The OSVs, as I said, currently have a square stern, so part of the planned overhauls is to include the radius to match our existing docks. The modification is expected to add 19 feet to the overall length of the vessels, increasing it to 259 feet. Because of the current agreements that we have with the town, our plans have been developed to remove 24 feet of the midbody, so on the next slide. That image where it's circled in blue is where we intend on cutting the vessel in half and removing 24 feet. The length of the freight deck of our current vessels, the Gayhead, Contamer, and Sanctity, are roughly 165 feet, 166 feet, and 160 feet respectively. The length of the freight decks of the Aquina, Monomoy, and Bonstable are expected to be approximately 160 feet, following the removal of a 24-foot midbody. As I indicated earlier, one of the modifications that we'll be doing to the OSVs is the installation of a safety device, one of which is a marine evacuation system, or MES. It's going to be located on the freight deck, and MES is a lifesaving device consisting of an inflatable slide where passengers can evacuate straight down into a waiting life raft in lieu of climbing down a ladder. So on the next slide, we're pointing out where those rafts would be deployed. In order to accomplish this, a three-foot wide designated path to both the Stabbin and Port MES locations will need to cross the freight deck. So on the next slide, you'll see where we'll have to be having a painted path, accessible path. So once we do that, we'll end up with approximately 157 feet of usable lanes for vehicles, or eight to nine feet less than what our existing vessels have. The other modifications we have, that we're going to be making to the vessels is, the beam is 54 feet. We are going to be able to increase that beam, which will make those vessels wider than the vessels that we have, but no wider than what the Eagle in the Woods Hole, which run on this run primarily. But because of the shorter freight deck at 235 feet, the efficiencies that we gain by adding width on the deck won't be fully utilized. So configuring the OSVs at 245 feet will permit the Authority to transport some additional standard-sized vehicles. So next slide. And this shows, the top image is the Sanctity, so typically we can hold about 10 trucks on the Sanctity. The Gayhead and Contamer, approximately 11. And at 235 feet, we're looking at 12 trucks. And part of this is, the naval architect isn't able to take into the geometry of how the trucks are going to be able to back into the spaces and things like that. So this is our best estimate at this point on how this will go. And then if you see on the bottom image, because of that addition, if we were able to get the additional 10 feet, we would be able to put some additional smaller vehicles on the stern when we load the vessel. As I mentioned earlier, the OSVs currently have an approximate length of 222 feet at the waterline. With the modifications to cut out a 24-foot midbody, it'd be 198 feet. A removal of only 14 feet would result in 208 feet, and that waterline would be less than the Gayhead at 218 feet, the Contamer at 216 feet, and the Sanctity at 220 feet. We've talked to all of our port captains, our assistant port captain, senior captains, excuse me, our assistant port captain and our port captain, and all have expressed no concern operating these vessels at 245 feet in the Hyannis Channel because of the maneuverability that these vessels are going to have. The channel just south of the Authority's slips in Hyannis is no less than 300 feet wide, and thus for maneuvering at the dock at 245 feet, they don't see any issue in doing that. I think, next slide, please. Sorry, so the top image is of the Woods Hole, and you'll see that the waterline, the length of the waterline for that vessel is just under 226 feet. The Aquina at 235 feet would be roughly 200 feet. And then the next slide. The Aquina at the previous slide, actually, previous slide. At 245 feet, it shows that we're at 209 feet for an overall at the waterline, so. And then the next slide is just an image that we were able to take of the Gayhead pulling into the slip in Hyannis, and we'd be talking about adding 10 more feet to this lane. So as I said, this, you know, all of our captains are extremely confident that docking in Hyannis at 245 feet will not be an issue. Accordingly, the Steamship Authority is requesting consideration to amend the agreements to permit the Steamship Authority vessels up to 245 feet instead of the current 235 feet. Happy to answer any questions?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. So with that, it would be time for discussion, and Counsel Atzlis has his hands up for a comment question.
Yep, I have a, first a question, then I have some comments. Thank you for your presentation. So I noticed in your diagram that shows, first of all, will all of these three of these vessels be operating out of Hyannis?
One will be operating on a year-round basis, and there'll be times during the year that we'll have two of them operating on this route.
Okay. So one of your diagrams shows trucks, freight, you know, freight vehicles. In your photo, in this photo here, it shows passenger vehicles?
Yep.
So it's safe to assume that along with being able to increase the number of freight vehicles, you'll also be able to increase the number of passenger vehicles on this as well?
Yeah, so I believe that picture actually was taken over a weekend, on the weekends when we don't have any, there's not as much commercial traffic. Those vessels, since they're operating for the commercial traffic, will be taking cars along with us.
Yeah, but in the summertime, you'll be cars during the week as well. I mean, it's...
Perhaps later in the day, because the demand that we have right now for the commercial traffic, those earlier trips in the day are filled up with commercial traffic going to the island and then in the afternoon coming back off island.
Okay. Thank you. If I may?
Please.
So I just want to provide some context where I'm going with this, and this is for those in attendance, those viewing, and maybe some of my fellow counselors. So, you know, when I look at the Steamship Authority operating in our town, the first thing that comes to mind is they get more than they give, okay? You pay no property taxes for roughly $5 to $6 million worth of property that we have here, that you have in our town that you're operating from. There's an embarkation fee that ends up, that you pay to the state that ends up coming back to us at about $130,000, $180,000, which is divided between yourselves and Highline. You are, you know, all these vehicles, passenger, freight, they're all coming through our town. They're coming through Hyannis, tight roads, causing more traffic. And I can't, I can't get my head around the fact that we, you have an option that you were looking into New Bedford as an alternative or supplemental location, and that seems to have gone nowhere, and I would like to know why. But I believe as a, for myself speaking here, that if we're going to make concessions for the Steamship Authority yet again, that there should be something that we can talk about here as a council as what will benefit our community, our town, our, that part of the village of Hyannis. So I'm concerned, I'm not willing to move forward with this as it stands, the way this is written. That's just how I feel and how my fellow counselors feel. I'll let them comment, obviously. But again, I think that for what the Steamship Authority gains from doing business in our town, in the village of Hyannis specifically, I don't think that the way this is being presented is enough for us. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Sure, you can respond to that if you'd like, yeah.
When you, as you come up. So in regards to a couple of those points, we did put out an RFP for any operator that wanted to provide service from an off-Cape port to the islands. We sent out over 20,000 emails that went out through a major marine publication. We had 47 companies take out bid packages, and we received no, no submittals by the deadline. We still have not received any submittals in that regard. We do have one, this past summer, there was a operator, a badge operator, that operated out in New Bedford, and they did run service to Nantucket, carrying commercial vehicles over to our facility over at Nantucket. He has a, that company has a similar proposal to be licensed to run that service again this year. There's some additional information that he needs to provide us first before we present it to our board for consideration, so.
May I?
Sure. Please, Counsel Atzlis.
So with the company that's responded, or companies, so you're putting this out to private operators, is that correct?
Yeah, at this point, well, first off, we don't have enough vessels in order to operate from New Bedford as well. The service just from New Bedford to the vineyard would be about a 2 hour and 15 minute, 2 hours to 2 hours and 15 minutes sail from Woods Hole. We can make the sailing in 45 minutes. So it would change our, from being able to run seven round trips from Woods Hole to the vineyard to only three round trips from New Bedford. To run from New Bedford to Nantucket would add at least another hour to that sailing. So we would, during a coast guide-approved time limitations on our crews, we would only be able to run at most two trips from New Bedford. We don't have a facility in New Bedford. The state pier, the city of New Bedford, my understanding, has different plans. They actually have, the management of that is under mass development now, and they recently came out with a plan to take the dock area and to be creating multiple businesses on that site. Right now, it's, there is a high-speed passenger ferry that we license that uses that facility, but the dock itself is not capable of carrying the trucks, the condition of the dock. We have had conversations with New Bedford regarding any other properties that they may have in the harbor. There's a harbor, there's a piece of property that's north of the Route 6 Bridge in New Bedford, but at this point, it hasn't been their focus to develop that piece of property. And at one acre, it would be challenging to be able to stage vehicle loads, to be able to fill up a freight vessel, so. But we continue to try to work with that. We have an open, we're open to any request for services from off-Cape. It's just that at this point, you know, we put the vineyard one out in thinking that there may be some operators out there that can come up with a different business plan that would make it viable. We weren't going to be subsidizing it. We're, well, we're a state agency. We run independent of the Commonwealth. We receive no funding from the Commonwealth. And our predecessor Authority lost money each of the approximate 10 years that they operated. We've been operating since 1960, and 62 years now that we've gone without a deficit, so. You know, we, we look at the finances of being able to operate that route, and we can't, you know, we've struggled to try to figure out a way to make it a viable route and also pay for itself. The other aspects, you know, regarding the service out of here, there is 10 to 12 businesses that are located in the town of Bonstable that utilize our service on a very regular basis, bringing their merchandise over to the island, so. There is some, there's benefit there, there's also, you know, we haven't done any economic studies, but, you know, I know, you know, that the other day when we were canceled because of the weather, I'm sure the hotels and restaurants in the area were generating a lot of, a lot of work as well, so.
Manny?
That's up for debate. As far as, if we're going to make the claim that the folks traveling to Hyannis to take the ferries, whether it's Highline or yours, and they stick around for great lengths of time and spend money in our restaurants and hotels, that's not accurate. I can tell you from experience, you know, it's a very, very small percentage, so to think that there's a big ancillary benefit to us, that would not be accurate. And I, I'm very confident in that statement, so. But as far as the alternative locations concerned, I think that that needs to be explored harder. Now, who grants the licenses? Is it the Steamship Authority that grants the license to alternative operators?
Yes, we have licensing powers to do this.
Authority, right? Okay. So, and then who ultimately approves? Is it, so it comes to a vote by?
Any license request would be first, we notice it publicly for public comment. We then present it to our Port Council for discussion and for their recommendation, and then that recommendation is then presented to our Board, which then will vote on the license request.
And that's basically Nantucket, and the vineyard have the highest percentage of voting rights?
The two islands have 35%.
They have 35%, so that's 70%, and then Bonstable and Falmouth?
And New Bedford each have 10%.
Each have 10%. So basically, if they say yea or nay to somebody that's looking to get a license to operate, if they say no, it doesn't happen.
Yeah, so...
Because they have the majority.
They have the majority, and the only freight service proposal that we had, you know, last summer, they did approve that unanimously. The other services all, have all been passenger-only service.
Okay. All right. I'll step back for a few minutes.
Thank you, Counsel Atzlis. Counsel Medes, please.
Good evening. How are you? Counsel Atzlis, maybe said a little bit more eloquent, but I'm a straight shooter. What does it do for us? Is the little bit of money we get worth the delays? All this transportation comes through every heavy checkpoint in this town. I have to drive through those checkpoints every morning, as well as other people who work. We're delayed, the wear and tear on our roads. What is it doing for us? And then we get 10% of a vote in stock. I mean, it does nothing for us, seriously, nothing. We're, you know, I mean, it's, to me, looking at it, being in business, I would never, ever make this deal. I mean, we don't have say on our own roads. The people from the islands are going to tell us what we can do? No, I mean...
Bob Jones, you'd like to? Sure. I'm just going to go to Counsel Clark real quick, and then we'll give you an opportunity to speak. Thank you. And thank you for your service, years of service on that board.
I'll yield to Bob.
Okay, yeah, I appreciate it. Mr. Jones, to the microphone, please. If you could just introduce yourself, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Former Town Counsel.
For those that don't know me, my name's Bob Jones, and I serve as your representative to the Steamship Authority on the Board, as the Governor. I started out when the Port Council first started about 20 years ago, and I started in that position, and Bob O'Brien was the Governor at the time. Couldn't find a finer man. And we worked great together because we worked under the radar. We didn't, we didn't want to see our names in print. We didn't want anything. And when things came up for the town of Bonstable, we clipped them in the bud so they never got to you. You wouldn't have to waste this whole meeting. That was our whole goal. But, you know, when you're talking about New Bedford, you know, New Bedford is, when the Steamship first came here, which was 1978, they were not welcome into the town with open arms. And the reason was that, first of all, the infrastructure, they're big boats, there was traffic, there was all the things you put on, you know, a transportation entity. But also, going back to 1960 with the enabling legislation, prior to that, that the boat was run by private carriers, and the Commonwealth came in and put all those carriers under the Commonwealth for the Steamship. And it was poorly run, the schedules were terrible, their ships were old, and there was continual deficits. Now, the deficits are very important thing for us to remember here, because any deficit that we get from the Steamship Authority comes back to you, to me, in the town of Bonstable and the towns we serve, not to the state, not, it's our responsibility. That's just the way the legislation is. So you try to run the business as effective as you can, and with all those constant deficits, in 1960, they eliminated New Bedford from the root. They took them out. So now it was Woods Hole, Nantucket, and Martha's Vineyard. We weren't a player. And that's what, from that time forward, in 1960, there has not been a deficit. New Bedford is just too far. And they had, it took, New Bedford is four and a half hours to Nantucket. It's two, two hours and about 15 to Martha's Vineyard. What Bob mentioned, that we sent out an RFP because the town of Falmouth has been screaming and yelling about the traffic, about everything, and going to New Bedford. So we put out an RFP and made it open enough so anybody applying could negotiate with us. And like Bob said, there was 47 proposals sent out to potential carriers. Not one carried, returned the thing. We did have the opportunity to talk to the carrier that is doing the badge service to Nantucket, and he made an application, and in the Port Council meeting, they asked him why he didn't return, you know, why he didn't bid. He said, "It's just not economical." We've known that for years, but nobody wants to believe us. I believed it. When I, before, when it came into Hyannis, I was the Chairman of the Waterways Committee, and I did not like to fill up the harbor, and I didn't like the big boats and whatever. And I thought they should do a badgeing service from New Bedford. And I, along with Bob O'Brien, we went up to the State House, Governor's Office, we went around the town from over there. When I finally got appointed on the Port Council, I realized one thing. I was dead wrong. It's a... It's an absolute guarantee deficit to run, you know, from New Bedford by none. Somebody could have come up, 47 carriers said it's too expensive, you know? You don't need to take my word for it, you need to take their word for it and why they didn't. So, as much as we'd like to get out of, you know, alleviate some of the traffic, the only thing we can do is make the best of what we have. We have, when the trucks come down, they, they come down to a staging area at the airport. And they will stay there until the terminal is free to bring the trucks down. And they don't necessarily come down caravan because some of them come down, you know, just into the, into the, the terminal. And they stage there until it's time to go. And what we're talking on these freight boats is 12, you know, 64-foot trailers. Now, there'll be a different mix on them and everything, but if you figured we're, we're carrying 10 or 11 trailers right now, what we're asking is to carry 12. That's what amounts to. And the, the impact on the economy, our traffic is, is just not there. When they come out of the terminal, they go straight down Pleasant Street, or they take a right and they go down to Lewis Bay Road and straight out to Willow Street. And when they come off of the boats, we have a, a valet service that will take the ship, the boats, excuse me, the, the trailers off of the boat. And if the drivers are not there, we'll pull them off to the, you know, the staging area to exit. So, they just kind of filter out of here. Automobile traffic is different. You take, you take one truck, trailer truck that'll hold five automobiles, and he can clear the intersection faster than five automobiles. And the reasons for that is, first of all, they got the height, they can see both ways. And, and there's a tonnage situation there. Who's going to step in front of a tractor-trailer truck when he wants to clear the area? So, you know, there's a lot of things to consider. I didn't anticipate we're going to get into New Bedford and, you know, things like that, but it's a good question, it's on everybody's mind. But we fought for years, you know, it took us years to get a vote here. When they first came down, the town of Barnstable did not want to have a boat. They didn't want to have, be involved in the deficit. They just said, "Okay, you know, here you are," and, and, and that's it. And it wasn't till 1978 or so, when, when, or later, we went to get a vote and we had to fight for a vote. And once, once we did, we were in the ballgame. So, and, and yes, to, to licensing carriers, the reason for this is, is really quite simple. It isn't anything that I like as, as a person who likes free commerce and, and whatever. But when you have a ferry service that is, has, has to run, that has to stay in the block, and if it doesn't stay in the block, it impacts the town, then you can understand that you don't want tonne, uh, uh, carriers coming in, setting up shop for two, three months or something like that, and when it gets slow, they go home, and you got to run year-round. And that's exactly why they set up, you know, the licensing. And the licensing has a fee, so it's a percentage of last year's ticket. It's nominal. Still, to the carriers, any additional money is, is expensive. But nevertheless, it's able, that we can come in before you tonight and say that we haven't had a deficit in 60 years. And I don't know how many businesses around town can say they haven't. And especially during the pandemic, when, when that happened, I sent all of you that were on the board at that time, a letter explaining, you know, what the risks are and to prepare. We could have got clobbered. But all I can say is from the, the people we have running the authority and, and our ability to go out and, and get some extra funds and things like that, we ended up in the black. And we had to run every single day. You know, I can't say, you know, that a lot of people love the Steamship Authority. But for myself, I'm, I made my living in the marine industry and I sold high-ticket items and I've been on Hyannis Harbor most of my life. So, I know, I, I, I know the, the territory and I love boats, so there's a small one, the Maritime Museum, where there are ships. Just a personality problem, but I, I enjoy them. So, I, one of the things you asked was a, a good question. Mr. Menzies, Council Mendy's, we don't do anything for the town. Well, Andy asked that question when we were there, "What do you do for the town?" Well, one of the things we do, we have 60 employees right now that make about $2 million a year. And I don't know what the numbers are of the retirees that are making money from the, the authority right now. I just don't know. But also, when, when we built the new terminal, we put in a dock down there that was supposed to be for dinghies and, and transient and things. It was based, it's been taken over and, and used, you know, by the police department, the, the fire department and, and the natural resources, the environmental police, which I think is an excellent use, especially where it is, it's close to, you know, where the hospitals are and things like that. But that's, that's part of a, a, a give and take. If you go down in Lewis Bay Road, you'll see right out front there, there's parking for the boat ramp. And I can tell you, I was responsible for that because when we were trying to put in that boat ramp, and I was sitting on the council here, that had Jack Shepard come down for the state access board, and he told us if you could get, you needed more parking at the ramp. And I said, "How close did the parking have to be?" He said, "Within 500 feet." So, we took a walk up the street and they were just, Steamship was just negotiating for the 200 Main Street property. And as it was, we carved out 42 parking spaces for truck and trailers. I, I gotta clarify that for, for, for the truck and trailers, that'd be 21 spaces. That's free. That's free. That's what the town is giving. And, and there's, there's more, you know, for jacket studies, they participate. So, in any event, it's not a take, take. We have, we have trucks that come down, that drive through, we never get a nickel out of them.
Mr. Jones, we just want to give time for the council to ask questions, but I appreciate your explanation and the history, but we just have to save time for the council discussion as well. I can.
Oh, I, I just get, you know.
Yes. I respect that, absolutely.
I had planned to go this way, that's why. All right. There's any questions? If not, it's fine.
Sure. I just, my name would just be comments, but follow-up, Council Mendy's, please.
Excuse me?
The, the thing that's bothersome to me in particular, first of all, is the deal. It's ridiculous. Second of all, this is in 1960. We're a town of 50,000 people. We're a lot bigger town, we have a lot bigger population, we have a lot bigger worker population. I drive those roads every morning. My constituents call me and tell me about the traffic. They tell me about the trucks. My 3,500 constituents that are in Hyannis, Tracy, you have about 3,500? And I'm sure you hear it. We all hear it. And that's the problem, is that we are a town of 50,000. We're not a town of 15,000 anymore. So, we have to, we have to do things proper for the residents of the town. And the way that Steamship is currently doing things are not proper for the residents of this town. I'm not worried about Nantucket. I'm not worried about Martha's Vineyard. I'm worried about Barnstable.
I, I don't want to, I've getting into back and forth, but I just want to tell you, Mr. Mendy's, I've lived in this town all my life, has my father, has my grandfather, has my great-grand, and they were on Main Street and we all lived in Hyannis. You know, I understand and I appreciate what you're saying. But I will, I'll, to hook us up, okay?
Appreciate you. Thank you. Councilor Steinheber, comment, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. And appreciate your service and I appreciate the fact that, you know, you weren't really prepared to talk to some of these issues tonight, but, you know, I do have to agree with my fellow counselors here that, you know, there's an ask on the table and there's a lot of issues that we grapple with, that we want to make sure are, are discussed. And I appreciate the effort of the assistant town manager to try to include that in this is that there'll be a discussion in the future. But I, but I wonder if that's really enough. I mean, I want to have a further discussion about New Bedford. I want to have a discussion about maybe lowering the caps here. Does that force more business towards a New Bedford opportunity because you're going to have freight looking for other places to go? You know, they don't have to go anywhere, so that's not creating an economic need someplace else. You know, the $5 to $6 million worth of free property, you know, we should be talking about payment in lieu, in lieu of taxes. We have easements we need. Like to have a discussion on 200 main property that we have, if, when we decide to do something. There's, there's a lot of issues that we need to work out with you in a collaborative way. But I feel more comfortable taking some time to think about when can we really have some concrete answers, discussion, collaboration on all those issues before we move forward, you know, with, with this item. And I appreciate the fact you weren't really ready to jump on those tonight. I'm not looking to solve all the problems tonight. But I think we, we need to have a agreed-upon calendar to really explore these and, and have these discussions on, on all those items. So, I, I appreciate my fellow counselors here and, and I too get, you know, calls, I think a lot of us do, and we have to respond to the citizens here and not necessarily to the Steamship's wants and needs or, or to the islands' wants and needs. You know, we, we're responsible to the people here and the impact here. So, that's my opinion on it.
Thank you, Council. Council Shaughnessy, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jones, for your comments. I appreciate it.
Is your microphone on?
Yes, sorry. You're located in my precinct, but prior to moving to Precinct 9, I was living behind the hospital and baby seat for 17 years. So, all of my egress and ingress to my home in some way was tied up in Pleasant School Street, Baby Street, or South Street. And also throughout the period when the new terminal opened back in the 90s. I honestly do not have a problem with the bigger boat because to me, it sounds more maneuverable. I very much have empathy for the fact that there are year-round residents on two islands off our coast who require import of almost all of their supplies, food stocks, medications, whatever it may be. And I, and I'm sensitive to that. However, the needs of those two islands, you know, if you look at the village of Woods Hole, I mean, the Steamship Authority's pretty much taken over Woods Hole. And when it, in terms of summertime, that's the game in Woods Hole. Trying to get to Woods Hole is very much tied up in Steamship Authority activities. As far as the village of Hyannis, it's really locked into the East End, which is probably, you know, the end of this village that's been in need of some attention probably since the early 80s. However, I'm also looking at, and, and I agree absolutely, this agreements with various amendments from '92, '95, '97 absolutely should be looked at. There should be a, more of a master agreement. But it's also not lost on me that this agreement was, you know, originally executed half of my lifetime ago. So, it's not so much that I am against the bigger boat, sounds actually far more efficient. But I think after 25, 30 years, I would like to have, you know, I think the Steamship Terminal's great, provided community space, the Hyannis, Greater Hyannis Civic Association meets there, it's a beautiful building. But I do think after 25, 30 years, that we do need to look at this. And I think, you know, there do need to be those talks about the damage that those trucks do to South Street and the fact that, you know, School Street, Pleasant Street, these are very small roads, all of which pour out on the East End of Main Street, which is also very tight. And then, of course, you have the parking off of Camp Street. It's a very tight area of town where all of the Steamship Authority traffic is concentrated. So, for the summer months, it's pretty tough. And again, do I think we can get rid of it? No. Do I think the islands rely on it too heavily? Yes. But I also think with the time that's passed, I think it's time to look over the agreement as a whole. Do I think it should be a single document? Absolutely. But I think we should look at some of these other things, such as, I know some of these things have more to do with the state, like the embarkment fee. But again, if that's a fee that was set 25 years ago, is it time to look at that? If Yarmouth gets a piece of that fee, like a quarter of it, because they share Lewis Bay with us, but yet we actually have the burden of the traffic and infrastructure, I don't think that's right either. So, you know, I, I think we, I would like to think it's an opportunity for the town and the Steamship Authority to come together and talk about an agreement that's going to carry us through the next 30 years. You know, and I think this has done well at carrying us through since the early 90s. But I think it's time to have a bigger conversation, you know, with the forum-based zoning. We've made some big moves on this side of Hyannis. And I really think it's time to sit down with you as, you know, a contributor in the community and have a bigger discussion of that next long-term plan. So, really, that's what I have to say about it. I'm, I'm not so much opposed to the bigger boat or anything like that. I just think it's been a really long time since we've had this opportunity to come together and talk about, you know, what this agreement from 25 years ago needs to look like going into the next 25. So, that's my position on that.
Thank you, Council Shaughnessy. Council Clark, please.
Thank you very much, President Lebec. And thank you, sir, and thank Mr. Jones for decades of service to our town. And I do recognize the value of the Steamship Authority to the services, vital services to the islands. A couple of questions strikes me. How come the Steamship Authority purchased vessels over the length limit before they asked permission? So, that just struck me as the cart before the horse. And Counselor Ledke and I had the benefit of a meeting with Director Milne yesterday to, for a little more information regarding finances. And if I have, if I understood correctly, Mr. Milne, or Director Milne, told us that the Steam, Steamship Authority provides 50 cents a ticket as an embarkment fee. So, if that was derived from the 90s, I agree with the fellow counselors that it's time to revisit that and perhaps help Barnstable recoup some of the impacts that the Steamship Authority has made to this part of town. He also, Mr. Milne, or Director Milne, also explained that indeed Counselor Shaughnessy is correct that Yarmouth receives 25% of those revenues and Barnstable receives 75%. So, if that's correct. So, off of 50 cents a ticket, I think it's time to, to look at, at impact fees or the impact to our town, as my fellow counselors have said. I do think that perhaps there might be some way to incentivize the freight boats to, to use New Bedford or do some kind of creating, creative negotiating. At least, understanding that there's a four-hour trip to Nantucket, at least maybe begin with trips to New Bed, to Martha's Vineyard, if that's the shorter trip. And does the Steamship Authority bear any responsibility for dredging of the Hyannis Harbor? Because I imagine that those big boats are contributing to the shoaling in, in Hyannis Harbor. So, I do have reservations about going forward on this as presented. And I do think that it's time to have a comprehensive overhaul of these amendments as proposed, but also updating it with sensitivity to the town of Barnstable. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Clark. Follow-up, Council Shaughnessy.
Thank you. If I could ask, I tried as best to keep up with you discussing. I tried as best to keep up with you discussing the boats and the floor plans of the boats, the modifications that'll have to be made to turn these into ferry boats. It was a lot of acronyms, a lot of keeping up for me. But if I could ask you a direct question, in terms of renovating and repurposing this boats and knowing whether you're going to have to cut, shorten them, not shorten them, and again, I have no problem with the length, what kind of timeline out are you guys looking at in terms of actually getting them into service?
So currently, we have, we opened bids to modify the vessels back on February 8. We received two bids, one yard down in Louisiana, one yard down in Alabama. We've been working with the Alabama yard, which was the low bidder. The bid came in substantially higher than what we had anticipated it would, it would come in at. Part of the bid package that we had put out was, and to address Counselor Clark's concern about why did we buy boats that were over length to begin with? These were the boats that closest met the requirements. And our commitment, as I mentioned earlier, was we're committed to cutting 24 feet out. We'd like to only cut 14 feet out. I have, you know, senior captains that are asking, why are we cutting them at all? Because they, they don't have any concerns about maneuverability with these vessels. But we want to be, you know, we know we're neighbors in the harbor and we want to be respectful there. So the plans right now are to make these boats 235. But because of these other issues in terms of the lane lengths and the area that we need to have for the marine evacuation system, we're asking for the consideration for those additional 10 feet. Couple other things, if I may.
But just, in other words, no one's cutting into any of these boats in the next month, two months, three months, probably, a little ways out?
We anticipate coming back to the board at their March meeting, which is going to be the 29th now, with a recommendation to either award the contract or to rebid the project. If it's to award the contract, the shipyard will be taking possession of those vessels within two weeks and will be starting to work then. The goal would be to have at least the first vessel available for the summer, the 2024 summer season.
Counselor Shaughnessy.
May I make a motion, with that in mind?
I'm going to let more counsel discussion. I haven't even done this side yet. So I just want to give an opportunity. I can feel the chomping at the bit to comment. So going down the line, anybody, counsel star?
Yeah, thank you. I just have two concerns along with Ms. Shaughnessy and Ms. Clark. Is, when is the dredging? I think we need to look at the whole harbor. Looking, you know, maybe talk to the harbor master about what the dredging schedule is, what the bottom looks like now. In two years, can we reevaluate what it looks like? And you look, I mean, look at that picture. You know, do they, they bring the boats in and leave the props going? Or they shut the boats down?
No, once they get to, once they get to the dock, they secure them with cables and they.
Okay. But it's just, okay, that's digging a big hole, that thing. And I don't know whether the props are bigger or whatever. So that, and there was one other thing, but I'll, I don't remember what it was. So let's keep moving. Thank you.
So if I, if I may.
Sure.
Regarding the dredging, this has been something that we've been bringing to the harbor master's attention for the past two years. We're concerned about it ourselves. They have submitted to the Corps of Engineers for dredging to be done. My understanding was the last round that the Plymouth Harbor was awarded a dredge time, but the Hyannis Harbor was not. We just sent a letter to Senator Warren Mackey and Congressman Keating, asking them to intercede on our behalf because the last two vessels that we've, that operate out of this harbor, the Eagle and the Woods Hole, when they were taken out of the water for their dry dock, their every other year dry dock, we had shiny bottoms and we had to replace the bearings on the shafting because it had prematurely worn because of the sand infiltration. So we're aware of that. We actually commissioned a hydrographic survey of the harbor and we provided that to the town. And also, we've included that in our submission to the state's delegation to see if they could, you know. We're concerned about it. There's been some instances where we've had to not transport commercial cargo because there wasn't going to be sufficient water under the keel to make the passage. So we're aware of that. And we know that it's a safety concern for all, you know, all the vessels that are transiting the harbor, so.
Just one more follow-up.
Sure.
So basically, we're not looking for a one-time fix. So some fund that might be available if dredging is ever needed any other time. And the other thought was, we also have to think about South Street if we change it to one direction.
Two ways, you mean, two directions?
Two directions, right, excuse me. Two directions, so, but, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Star. Counselor Ledke, do you have a comment?
Again, I'll try not to duplicate. I really appreciate all the comments of the counselors. I'll give you my bottom line upfront. I will not vote for this. I agree exactly with Counselor Mendez. But let me tell you my comments. Bob Jones, your passion, it's incredible. I admire it. I admire your heritage that you discussed. I recently witnessed passion similar to yours when there was the planning board met to discuss the shoestring property proposal for the dockside. There was a lot of passionate comment there that reminded me very much of your presentation here. And what that tells me is that this harbor is a very special place. And we recently had a wonderful presentation from the Commercial Fishermen's Alliance. And I was very taken by that as well. This harbor is a shared resource, it's beloved resource. And you guys are the biggest guys on the block. I admire you for always operating in the black. We heard from Counselor Mendez, businesses are closing here. You guys are doing great. I wish we all could operate tax-free. It gives a good advantage. There's a commercial operator at the airport known as Cape Air. They are the masters of essential air service. Essential air service is a subsidized program that provides air service to underserviced communities. And they've broken the code and they've done a tremendous business. So some kind of operation like that out of New Bedford, I too don't think we've done the due diligence to explore that. And that is in the agreement in great detail, that that needs to be explored. And I would think that a lot of these trucks, particularly the fuel stop and shop, those aren't loaded here on the Cape. That's not supporting our businesses. Some of the lumber, the craftsmen, that's supporting our local businesses. Most of those trucks are probably coming out of Connecticut. And they're going by New Bedford and they're waving as they go by and they come over our bridges. So I think there's some other aspects that need to be looked at in a larger context. You know, who benefits, you know? There is that, that, you know, certain freight operations, who cares if a fuel takes four hours? You know, there can be scheduling. Some things are more essential. I would say that you knocked Cape Air, Nantucket Air, Nantucket Air doesn't exist, out of business with your fast ferries. You're to be commended for that. I've ridden those. That's a great service. So you do amazing things, but you're the biggest guys in there. And you need to listen to the other folks. And what I propose, I agree with the comments here. I'll never vote positive for this tonight. This needs to be taken into the public arena. And we heard earlier that Counselor Atsalas, I think he shepherded this with Griffin's presentation about the sewage plan in Centerville. Splendid. Gordon, you were there. Chris, you were there. I was there. Absolutely amazing. That's what we need. We need an open discussion. We need to bring this out. We need to talk with Falmouth. We need to let people voice their opinions and have an open discussion. You provide an amazing service. And I will say that Senator Moran, I don't know if you people are aware of it, she sponsored a bill. She did it last year. It wasn't successful. It's called an Act Relative to Municipal Equity in Steamship Authority Operation. It's Senate Bill 2361. And what it does is addresses what we discussed earlier. Dukes and Nantucket have a 35% vote. That, to me, equals 70%. So whatever they say goes. Everyone else, being New Bedford, I'm not even sure why they're in this. But New Bedford's in it, Barnstable and Falmouth are in it. They have 10%. Her bill would require one of those 10 percenters to agree with the 70 percenters. And I think that is, it's just what she says, it's an equity piece. The other thing that's mentioned in the agreement is the harbor plan. And that's kind of what I have alluded to. We need a harbor plan. We absolutely need it. If you, that's a less, again, that planning board meeting is a lesson in civics. My goodness, I admire those planning board members. I think one of the general must have spoken for 45 minutes to explain his position. It was beautiful, absolutely beautiful. And that's what we need here. We need a harbor plan. You guys need to be in it. The commercial fishermen need to be in it. Wayne Kirker needs to be in it. General citizens need to be in it. We all need to be in it. We need to foster that as a town and work with this. I think we need to help Senator Moran pass that. I think that's important. I don't, you know, know how many citizens are aware of the inequities in the voting. And I understand, Bob, what he's, I've read the, I've read the agreements. I understand what you're saying. If there's a deficit, we're on the hook. Hey, there's dangers in everything. There's risks in everything. But the harbor is too important. It's too precious. It's too small for this kind of expansion. And to think we could, you could come in here and just extend the boats and, and I, again, Councilman Stan Hitzfelder mentioned 200 Main. We could really capitalize on what Mayor Wu is doing in Boston. She's done an inventory of her property and she's going to offer it for free to get the housing she needs. We could get the housing we need at 200 Main. You guys have first right of refusal. You should have come here and said, I'm giving up 200 Main. I need my 10 feet. This is so critical to me for my operation. You should, you should have offered that right up front. 200 Main. Town of Barnstable will take it. My God, you need housing. That's perfect for housing, right by the transportation center. But you didn't, you didn't mention that. But those are the kind of discussions we need. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Ledke. Any other comment from this side? Counselor Cusack, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, gentlemen, for presenting this evening. I guess I just, I've been looking for a data point, which would just be, what actually would be the impact if we're comparing oranges to oranges? If this new, these new ships, these new vessels come in at 245, then we can project out for the first year of service, we would be plus this many trips or, you know, this many round trips. Is that, those numbers, have they been generated? I only heard like, right now it's at 11, but then we'd go to 12 if you got to the 245.
Right. And so during the summer season, we would fully anticipate that we'd be filling that space. There is times during the offseason where we do have to run additional service that, just because it's too much service for just a two-boat schedule, so we have to run the three-boat schedule. So there may be some opportunities then for us to be able to consolidate and only to go back to a two-boat schedule. The, again, the geometries of, you know, of loading, of loading the vessel are such that, you know, we do anticipate that we're going to be able to get another vehicle. But we need to be able to, you know, the idea is that we need to, we're looking at being able to use the full length of that deck. And this is, this deck is a little shorter because the Kaitama Gay Head and Sankey were also OSVs. We converted those, you know, 30 years ago. And since that time, the OSV market, they've gone and they've, they've increased the size of the house. So that's why it was difficult to find vessels that came close to this, that we were going to be able to modify to get down to 235 feet, so.
Is there a projected number? Like, okay, in 2022, we knew we did this many trips with this many boats. I mean, with this many, let's call, you know, semi-trailers on and that we would project if we could get the 245 feet that in the, you know, I guess you said 2024 would be the first year that that would come online? Then the projection out in the first year would be plus 100 vehicle trips, 1,000 vehicle trips, you know, 10,000? I just didn't know if that number had been established.
So typically, the freight boats, they can operate three round trips in an 18-hour operating day. So if we're looking at three additional vehicles in each direction.
In each direction, yeah.
Per day. And it's seasonal because, you know, in the springtime, early summer, we're carrying more traffic to the island than we are coming off. And then it flips in the fall. So it's not, you know, typically, you know, a full load each time.
Yeah, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cusack. Counselor Rep. Seti, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, gentlemen, for all being here tonight. So I'm not going to, I'm not going to belabor the topic and it sounds like most of the concerns that I have have been brought up. You know, I was kind of surprised that the Waterways Committee just offered, you know, approval of this. I'd like to know the depth of water. And I know for a fact that an area of that inner harbor is dredged on an annual basis and at the largesse of a private individual. So I have concerns that the steamship authority has not established a dredge fund. And waiting for Army Corps, waiting for someone else. I'd like to see it happen now. And if you have to do it annually, I think that should be the case. You talk about the new vessels being two bow thrusters and one stern thruster. By this photograph, it looks like there's an awful lot of churn from a single center one that's presently, the twin screws. I don't know. I guess this is twin screw that I'm looking at and the churn. And that churn brings up a lot of dirt, a lot of accretion to the surrounding areas. And that's got to be addressed. And there's complaints about that. I'm surprised, too, the Waterways has, you know, didn't, didn't bring that to our attention. And that's concerning. Someone that has navigated those waters, it's very shallow. So what's the depth, if that's going to change with these boats? And what's the churn going to be from these boats? So, you know, the fiscal impact, and I'm jumping around here, but the fiscal impact says none on this item. To me, that I respectfully disagree with that. The fiscal impact might not be, you know, to our bottom line, but I'd like to see more come back, as all my fellow counselors have articulated. What is the embarkation fee for freights? We know what it is for a single ferry ride or 50 cents. So we need, just like everybody else has been dealt with fuel surcharges during this pandemic, maybe it's time to look at the freight surcharges coming through here and, you know, limit some of the, or divert some of the freight that comes through here. As a property owner on Pleasant Street, I'm acutely, and someone that used to live on Pleasant Street, I'm acutely aware of the traffic, the ferry traffic. And, and actually, my property has been damaged by a semi trying to maneuver on Pleasant Street, trying to make that turn. And, you know, there's a lot of impacts to our community that I think this is the opportunity. We're going to talk about consolidating the multiple agreements and asking the manager, because this is under the manager's purview. We need to have a frank discussion about the steamship authority. about the Steamship Authority's relationship with the town of Barnstable. So my, my, my number one on this is these, these larger vessels, we know are going to create more churn, and they might be able to turn on a dime, but the result will be accretion and need for annual dredging in the inner harbor, for the public boat ramp, for the surrounding dockage, and, and the surrounding commercial vehicles or vessels. So I will not be supporting this, and I think it's the opportunity now for us to have a frank discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Rapoport. Any other comments?
I'm fine.
Okay, thank you. Any more follow-up on this side? Counsel Shaughnessy.
Thank you, President Levesque. If I may, I'd like to move to continue this item to a later date, a date uncertain, to provide us with some time to meet with the Steamship Authority, to have some discussions with the Steamship Authority before this item comes back to us.
So the idea is that we would move to continue this item to a date uncertain in lieu of more discussion in regards to these other items that were discussed here on the dais today, tonight?
Second.
Okay. Absolutely, Mr., actually, no. I really can't actually, because we got a motion on the floor, so, and this would be a roll call vote, correct? Or is it no? Move to, I can do it just majority? Okay, then I would please signify your approval for continue this item to a date uncertain to designate a time when we can have further discussion and possibly amend the item. If you are in favor, please signify, raise your hand. Yes.
I agree with your second.
Yes, you did, yes, you did, yep. Counselor Clark, second. You're welcome, thank you. All right, so signify your approval by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, so any abstention, I mean, any noes, nays? One, to not even continue it? Okay, any abstentions? I didn't see any. All right, so it passed, and that is continued. And that is the end of the item. Thank you. Moving on to the next item on our agenda, if we could, please. Nope, nope. Counsel Neary, please, item number 2023-140.
My pleasure, Mr. President. This is old business, requiring a public hearing and also a roll call majority vote. It's item number 2023-140, and it's appropriation order in the amount of $34,500 for burial equipment for the Department of Public Works Cemetery Program, as it's written.
We have first and a second, and we have Director Santos here for our rationale.
Thank you. As part of the town's long-range plan for the periodic replacement of equipment used for the maintenance of cemeteries and intermittent services, receipts from the sale of cemetery lots are credited to a special revenue fund in accordance with Massachusetts general finance laws. Thus, we are requesting $34,500 from the sale of cemetery lots special revenue fund used for the purpose of purchasing burial equipment. That includes one Cam Superline eight-ton split-deck trailer, one Cam five-ton six-by-ten dump trailer, one grading bucket, one green burial funeral cart, miscellaneous graveside equipment, and less a trade-in allowance. In accordance with the Massachusetts general laws, the town maintains a special revenue fund to which the receipts from the sale of cemetery lots are credited. Subsequently, these receipts may be appropriated for the cost of maintaining and improving the town's cemeteries. This account currently has a balance of $211,605.33. There is no fiscal impact on the general fund operating budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Santos. And this is a public hearing. Do we have anybody here would like to make public comment in regards to this item? That being said, do we have anybody who would like to participate remotely?
There is no one on Zoom.
Then I would close the public hearing, counsel discussion. Look into my left, look into my right, Counselor Star, please.
Thank you, Mr. Santos. Is there, are there, so are there new regulations being put together for green burial sites?
Yes, actually, the town manager's administrative assistant is in the process of scheduling a hearing for that now. It's underway, to schedule a hearing, yeah.
That's great news, I know. I was, I talked with Mr. St. Pierre before he retired, before COVID returned. So, so people can't, people can't buy sites at the moment?
No, but shortly.
But it'll be part of the regulations.
Hang on, Gordon, hang on.
That's it, thank you, sounds great.
Thank you, Counsel Star. Counsel Schnep, same question? Okay, so any other questions on this side? Okay, not seeing any. And for the discussion, let's take a vote, a roll call majority, please.
Clark?
Yes.
Cusack?
Yes.
Rapoport?
Yes.
Levesque?
Yes.
Ludkey?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Stein-Hilber?
Yes.
Atzalas?
Yes. Thank you very much. We have 12 yes, it's unanimous. Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Director Santos. Have a great night. Counsel Stein-Hilber, can you help me with items number 2023-141 through items number 2023-145?
Yes, Mr. President, under old business, I'd like to refer items 2023-141 through item 2023-145 to individual public hearings to be held on April 6, 2023, as written.
Second.
Yeah, first and a second, and if you could all please signify your approval by raising your hand and saying aye. Those are moved unanimously. And I believe that is the end of our agenda for this evening. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
First and a second, and if you can signify your approval by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. Everybody have a great night. Thank you so much.
Happy St. Patrick's Day to all tomorrow.